It looks like we'll get started about one minute. Actually, I got six o'clock. Okay, so we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome everybody to our June 1st, Cabarrus County Schools Board Work Session. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. And our first item on our, well, before we set our agenda, we're going to take a roll call to ensure that all our board members here are present. So if I call your name, just please acknowledge you're on the line. So Carolyn Carpenter.
Here.
Cindy Furtinbaum.
Here.
Barry Sheumaker.
Aki, I'm here.
Holly Grimsley.
Here.
Laura. David.
Here.
And then myself, Rob Walter, we're on the line. It shows we have 26 participants on the call, plus those who are listening online today. So with that, I will need a motion to adopt our agenda, which is on the board docs.
So moved.
So motion by David, second by Holly.
Cindy.
Cindy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes 7-0. We're going to move on to our report section, and what's our ongoing topic is our COVID-19 and how that's affecting our school system. And I think the pressing issue right now is how we're going to handle our graduations, and any other updates. So Chris Lauter, are you on the line? Can you give us an update?
Yeah, so just to give you, you know, not major changes since the last time we met, but the biggest one, I think, since that is that we were approved for, or the whole state, the state school board approved emergency leave for all employees. It's a really big deal, especially for employees that, in essence, can't report to work. So you think of a bus driver, when the buses aren't rolling, they can't report to work. And so they're covered by emergency leave through the end of the school year, so they're all 10-month employees that will take them through June 15th, or really, June 15th is that Monday. But great news for really everybody in the state, but certainly for our employees, that everybody continues to be able to use emergency leave if they're not able to report to work. And then we've started to bring some people back to work. Mostly our custodians, we had head custodians that were there every day, and those custodians were using, regular custodians were using emergency leave. And now we've brought them back to the building to start working on that as we're going to start taking up devices and stuff. So great news there. We've had a smooth transition with that. And as I mentioned, this week, you know, high schools graduated the end of next week, as you guys know. They've started to take up, you know, people have come back, pick up yearbooks, bring back uniforms, instruments, cookie dough, all the stuff that's out there. The schools have started that process. And then the other schools will start at the end of the week. So this week, and the end of this week, and beginning and all through next week, we'll kind of begin that whole process of taking all that up. Two big issues that have popped up that relate to COVID, the first one, I guess I'll go over is just athletics. I think we've had some questions about that. So we had to make a determination two or three weeks ago, ultimately, what we were going to do was summer programs. So think of that, we have robotics programs, robotic camps in the summer, we have athletic camps in the summer, all those type of things. And, you know, not knowing exactly what phase we were going to be in, and what was going to happen, and to be honest, not really sure what this is going to look like when people come back to campus, you know, taking temperatures, who's there, when they're there. Then we went ahead and made the decision and announced that, you know, all of our facilities would be closed through August the 1st, meaning like, can't use the facilities. So that means athletics can't use the facilities. That's primarily Parks and Rec in our county that's not using those either. Certainly talked about that with the county manager and the deputy managers and made sure we were all on the same page. Also to Londa and Perry at Parks and Rec, they've been great. All of us have been, Brian Tyson's worked really close with that. Brian Schultz, John Legrand of all, and Kelly Klutz, everybody's kind of worked on how we would handle that. But, you know, there are people who are kind of pressing for that to come back today. And so right now, again, our facilities are closed to anybody to use until August the 1st. There is a little bit of drama out there, I guess, because the High School Athletic Association has put out that they may form some guidance for our athletes and how that may handle. So some people in the public that are interested in using the facilities have said, hey, well, you're going to bring back high school sports on June 15th, then, you know, we're going to start using the facilities there. And so what I'll say to that is, is two things. First, I think it's very different to bring in 10 athletes to work with a coach that are our students in that facility, and open that up for people from all over the state to come in to see athletic competitions. So to me, those are two very different levels of things that are going to happen. But the second part of that is the Athletic Association really hasn't given any guidance. So what's going to happen, we anticipate this week, is we'll get some guidance from the High School Athletic Association. And then, you know, once we get it and look, you know, is that going to be a statewide rule? Is it going to be county by county? We have to evaluate all that. And then certainly we'll sit down and look with that and talk about that with the Health Department and the Cabarrus Health Alliance, and decide how we move forward based on state recommendations and local ones. But even then, it's possible that we would do something, again, with, we may permit three coaches to have six athletes at a time, but wouldn't necessarily open that up to the general public. So those are all decisions that have to be made. But I guess we wanted to make sure, we had some questions to clarify, that nobody's using that facility. I think there was even an article, any of our facility, I think there was an article in the paper even about churches that are used to renting the facilities or using other methods. And so, again, we've had some of those questions. So I guess just along athletics or our facilities, any questions about that? Because we've tried to clear those up, but you guys may have some.
So the churches cannot rent our facilities to August 1st, is what you're saying?
That's right. Nobody can rent the facilities until August the 1st. Again, because we just closed them, because we're not sure exactly what that looks like when we bring people back without guidance. Now, we could get very specific guidance from the state, from the governor, from the Department of Public Instruction, and we could modify that. But right now, not planning on that in August 1st is the date, because we had to tell people so they could go ahead and make decisions for the summer, including us, for things like, like I said, like robotics camps, athletic camps.
So the revenue that would normally be generated, did that go to the school or did that go to the system?
Kelly, you want to answer that, because it's kind of a double question, right?
Sure. There's a part of the application fee that goes to the school, and then there's a part that stays at the central office to cover electricity and just the normal type things, just to keep the building open. So it's both.
So any idea how much lost revenue we've had from this?
No, I haven't run those numbers. We could certainly take a look at that. You know, some of that is just covering, you know, the intent of the facility use fee is to cover the cost, whether it be the electricity, or whether it's the, you know, toilet paper and paper towels that's used at the school. So overall, I don't know that we've lost, we've truly lost anything. We've just, we've not collected the revenue, but we didn't have the expense associated with it either.
So any other thing along athletics or facilities before we move on? Okay, if not, then the next thing, I think the big topic has been graduation. I know that we have, you know, announced and made the announcement that we're going to do that at the Speedway, and all 10 of our high schools are going to operate from the Speedway, and with all the guidelines of that. So Mr. Allred is on tonight, he's actually in charge of that. First, I just want to say thanks for, you know, he's kind of had to re-figure how we're doing graduation and work on all the logistics of that. Nobody will ever really understand what all has to go on to make that smooth and efficient. He's done a great job. I spoke to the Speedway yesterday, I'll talk about that in just a minute. They were really bragging on Ben and all the work he's done and how great he was to work with. So he's just got a little short overview of graduation, so we'll let him do that, and then I'll say a couple of things.
Thanks, Chris. I appreciate the compliment. Real quick, can you see my screen?
Yes.
I can read your screen, too.
Yeah, I turned that off, new technology. So I wanted to give you just a quick kind of one-pager, just to kind of talk about where we are, what we're doing. I actually visited the Speedway today. I'll show you a couple of pictures I took while I was out there. They've been a great partner. That's kind of the first point. You know, we're doing this in partnership with NCDPI and the Charlotte Motor Speedway. Mark Johnson's office has been fantastic to us. They're sending a team of five folks, a professional photographer, and some other folks to come help us that day. We're very excited to be able to hold our graduations on our scheduled days, and we were able to integrate our early colleges, too. And just as a reminder, this is a really interesting year. It's the CAD Tech's inaugural class for graduation. The Speedway gives us all those opportunities to maintain social distancing, and all those safety measures that the Cabarrus Health Alliance has outlined. We've got those integrated in our notes, linked to the documents that Brian Schultz and his team have updated, and they are constantly updated whenever anything changes. Just a little bit of the details, graduates, their family and friends are going to come in and park in the drive-in area. I'll show you what that looks like in just a second, but imagine a drive-in theater with a 16,000-square-foot viewing area. They'll park, they'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, welcome speeches from Chris, the principal, and some students. We'll have to do a little interesting inversion of the processional, in the sense that students will be gone as the last student leaves, so we'll turn the tassels and do our pomp and circumstance first. They'll enter the track with a pace car, they'll come through turns three and turns four, and onto that front stretch. And then at that point, each graduate's going to cross the finish line. We've got multiple partners for photographs. We actually met with a group today. It's going to let automatic photographs be taken to the kids with a smile as they go by, that they can get later. The Department of Public Instruction is going to take photographs and provide all of those to us free of charge for students to do later. Ronnie Boone and her team have been working with me to try to do some frames and some post options for them. And then we'll be able to livestream that event directly from the Speedway, and as we usually do, we'll pull that down and post it on YouTube forever and ever, amen. If you're not familiar with the Speedway, I just want to just kind of give you this kind of overarching view. It's this Highway 29 down here at the bottom. We'll come in, if you've ever been to the Christmas lights, you've seen this kind of entry. This right here is a tunnel. This big graduate parking area is the one in front of the television, which is here. Massive TV, it was on today in the bright sunny light, and you can see it lit up in the middle of a bright sunny day. Hopefully, we get weather like this in a couple of weeks. Here, this red line here is where they'll come around the turn, and they'll cross the finish line right here. I took this picture today. Here's kind of what the infield looks like. And here's that start-finish line. So we'll have this decorated up. The principal will be there, the diplomas will be there, photographer and videographer there as well. And then just as a side note, right here, where this L is over to the T, is where we'll have the board set up. So we'll have big 10-by-20 tents, because we know it's probably going to, you know, we could have some rain, we could have some sun, it could be really hot. So we'll have places for you to go. I know Nathan, who's pictured here, Nathan Yang, who's been a fantastic partner for us, even talked about some portable fans or air conditioners to make sure everybody that's out there, it's going to be hot that day. So I'll stop talking, let you have any questions you have. Chris, if you have anything you want to add.
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, one of the things that I know you guys all look forward to, we all do, is shaking hands at graduation, and, you know, that is just not really going to be an option, obviously. So we tried to figure out how to position and work with the Speedway, and like Ben said, to have the board over pretty much as they cross across the finish line, you guys can be there and kind of wave. I'll probably be with you, to be honest, because I'm doing the welcome. And then I'm not going to be shaking anybody's hand either, so I'll probably be over at the tent when we're there, too. So again, just want to say thanks to the Speedway, who really has been tremendous to work with. Ben's done a great job working with them. And Mark Johnson, our state superintendent, worked with the Speedway to, you know, broker some of the things, made it very smooth. Like Ben said, they offered up photographers from the state that are going to take all the pictures and offer, so they really have been tremendous to work with. So before we answer questions, just let me talk a little bit about some stuff I was sent over social media this weekend. So there was a graduation ceremony by a local charter school that was at the Speedway this weekend, and evidently one of the channels covered it and showed that those kids walked across the stage and, you know, I don't know if they shook the principal's hand, but walked across the stage with that. So I talked to Mark Johnson, actually, because he was there, our state superintendent, and I called the Speedway. So what we've had is some parents that I know have emailed you guys to essentially say, hey, they did it this weekend, we should be able to do the same thing, let us walk across the stage. And so that charter school had 130 students that graduated, and it took them about 90 minutes to graduate. So we have three schools that have 400 and over. So you can obviously do the math from that and see that for half of our schools, you would ultimately have a four-and-a-half-hour ceremony. So the act of pulling the car up, getting out of the car, walking across, it just logistically was not possible. So it's not that we didn't want to be able to pull that off, but scope is pretty big, you know. So when you're talking 400 cars that go through and 400 kids, it's just not possible, you know, people to have five-hour graduation ceremonies. So we looked at that when we went to the Speedway, when we were with the Speedway and Mark Johnson, and all decided that. So when I called Mr. Johnson yesterday and said, hey, Mark, can you just kind of tell me how that went, you know, you were there with our setup and what that would be, he said, I need to tell you, it is not possible for you guys to do that in any amount of reasonable time. He said, it can't be done with you guys, you know, again, four, four-and-a-half hours. And he said, I'm very comfortable to tell anybody if you want to, to let me know that I'm saying that's not feasible for you guys. So it truly is the size there that's going to be an issue. And we obviously, they had one school, too. So if you're running a little bit late, that's a problem. We have 10 schools that kind of go in succession, so efficiency is more important. So again, just want to make sure you're aware that, we looked at every option that we could and tried to, you know, make this as unique and special as we can, but we do have to do it within the confines of what we've got. And right now, the rules that we came with now were at the guidance of the Speedway, and really us logistically are figuring out, this is really the only way to be able to pull it off and do 10 graduations in two days. So if you have any questions for me or Ben, we'll certainly try to answer them.
Board members?
So I have a quick question, because I think what I sent to y'all, I didn't know about the charter school deal, but what I sent to you was about Union County, which I think was a little bit different situation. I think the main question was asked about the walking, but also if individual high schools had wanted to do something separate or different, would that have been possible? Ben, I guess that's something maybe you need to weigh in on, but also, you know, just in knowing, I was curious, there was a lot of the emails that stated parents had said that, you know, the priority was to walk, and, you know, I was trying to read through some of those about the timeframe, and you know, when we were having them come across the stage at the arena, you know, that was definitely a very time-consuming issue as well. But was all that taken into consideration when that was put out there? I know you said that Mark Johnson weighed in, but you know, the survey itself seemed to have held some importance.
Part of that, and then you can add to anything. So as far as Union County, I mean, obviously, I don't want to speak to another school system, but I can say from everything I understand in the media, that school system said that they were going to defy the governor's order and do something different with graduation. That is, that is not something that I would recommend. Their school board evidently voted to defy the the governor's recommendation for graduation. So my understanding is they are going to have those in football stadiums in large groups. So that's not something that, you know, we ever considered and would not consider it based on the recommendations of that. As far as, you know, one school going out and doing something different, no, we have, for how many ever years now, at least 10 years or so, done the same thing, except with early colleges, because they graduate early, to try to replicate that, to have it in a place where, you know, we had a plan if it was going to rain. We have that now. Again, thanks to the Speedway, that's been great to work with. So you know, I would say that, yeah, I've certainly got some emails from you guys today, about maybe 15 or 20 emails, but we've also gotten quite a bit of feedback that people are happy with that, and that we've given them an alternative that we think meets all the criteria and is safe. So Ben, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
I think the only thing I'd add, so when this idea first came, Dr. Lauter called me on a Friday afternoon, and we talked through this, and Cindy and Carolyn, you know, you were both on the committee, and we did end up changing it to more of a reveal and what we were going to do. The first thing I did, Cindy, was I went to a spreadsheet, and I started plugging in, it takes 15 seconds, 30 seconds, 45 seconds, or a minute. And I started doing that math, because we did hear loud and clear, Holly, that they wanted to walk. And we did everything we could to try to make that work through this. And the bottom line is, I think four-and-a-half hours is probably conservative for some of our schools. It could have been even six to seven hours just in the walking. That doesn't count speeches or welcomes, or getting out of the Speedway or getting into the Speedway. So it really became time and making sure that we could do that, and to give students some semblance of what we normally do in a very, very unusual year.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Another question, I was, I'm not sure the other one I sent, I was thinking it was Lincoln County that used the Speedway. I can't remember. I'm thinking it's.
Lincoln Charter School is the one with 130 students.
So it was the smaller one. Okay, great. Okay.
Can you explain again how it's taking, how you estimated it to be six, four hours for a?
Yeah, so we said if each student, we have 425 students at Cox Mill or somewhere in that range, do you know the total number, Ben?
It's 440 at Cox Mill.
440 students. So we said to pull up a car, stop the car, get out of the car, walk across the stage and get back in the car. If that's a minute per student, then we're talking a seven-hour graduation ceremony. If it's 32nd per student, then we're talking a three-and-a-half-hour graduation there. So, and we don't think it could be done in 30 seconds, right? So, and what Mr. Johnson said was from the first kid walking across the stage at the Speedway to the last, with nothing else, no speech, no video, 130 kids took an hour. So we're just, you're looking at a minimum of a four-hour ceremony, and I don't think you could pull that off, as Ben said, when you start talking about 400 cars that have to drive through also.
If that's, if you're asking them to drive the car, get out of the car, walk across the stage, get back in the car, that probably would take time. But if you have them all get out to, get out of the car and line up along a mile and a half Speedway, six feet apart, and just walk across, it can't take nearly that amount of time.
Well, that was never an option. And even Lincoln Charter School, still, you have to, they're still in the car as to meet all the guidelines. So the option of not bringing the car in was not something that could be facilitated.
Not saying that, but saying you parked the car where you parked the car, and they all get out and line up, and then go back to their car and leave.
I think there's a liability issue with the Speedway, too, if the kids are walking on the track. You saw the waiver that we have to sign to be out of our cars.
Well, again, the reason we were choosing the Speedway was to avoid a large gathering. So, you know, even if you have them apart, you have 400 kids together, even if they're six feet apart, and that's something that is actually, the governor has prohibited, and something that we wouldn't recommend.
And we asked for like, maybe a waiver for something like that, since it's outdoors and it's such a large area?
Well, the governor's order says to not have large outdoor, and specifically said graduation, that was released last week.
Yeah, I mean, that's disappointing, because there's obviously a lot of families that would like to see their their graduates as they graduate, and not necessarily watch it on TV. But speaking of that, is there, how do people watch, I haven't seen a link posted yet, on how they're going to, where do they go to watch the graduations?
So today at the Speedway was our meeting to kind of test that stuff out, to make sure everything was good. So we gave them some links, they did a test, and Eric and Nathan, who are our contacts there, will be sending me that link today, and I'll get that to Ronnie and her team to post ASAP.
Okay, what is our weather plan? What is the weather plan?
Yes, there's a weather. Go ahead, Chris.
No, that's fine. You know specifics better than me. Go ahead.
So along the front stretch of the Speedway where people sit in the stands, there's a, it's like a large awning, and so you can essentially fit cars underneath that awning under the hallway. So it's very wide, and we actually are working through some contingencies of what if rain starts during, what if rain stops during. But if we have a really good indication of severe weather or rain, we'll pull right out of that drive-in spot that I showed you, and instead of going onto the track, we'll exit the track and we'll go to our rain component. And we'll have to relocate you all and Dr. Lauter cabinet and the principals, but we've got a plan to kind of pack that stuff up and move. We'll have a slight delay to get it there, but we've got a plan for that.
But typically, it doesn't rain all day anyway, or it won't rain all day anyway, but.
Yeah, my biggest concern is rain in the middle or sun in the middle, how we make that transition. So we're practicing some tabletops. Too bad Ms. Reimer's not here, as we talk about tabletops, about how we make those switches.
Okay, and then you said you were limiting what cars can come in and what cars can't. You can't have people in the back of trucks, that type of thing?
That's correct. That's a liability issue. The Speedway, we kind of went through that. So no pickup trucks, you can drive a pickup truck. Our rule is enough seat belts, you know, passengers can't exceed seat belts in the car. We've limited large vehicles, no limousines, no RVs, no trailers, no 15-passenger vans and things of that nature. Schools have been fielding calls, and I've been working collaboratively with principals. I had some fringe requests come in, as you might imagine, not everything falls right in the center. So there are some certain situations that we have to work through.
So if a family doesn't have a vehicle, how do we handle that?
We had a large meeting the other day with all of our social workers and principals. Mr. Schultz, Amy Jewell, who's our lead social worker for the county, John Basilees. We went through all of that. We had identified families, we had schools come in, we talked through it. Right now, we believe we have all families taken care of. And we're also just making sure that the people that have those relationships and connections with families are reaching out to ensure that we have transportation. Principals reported that on the pickup days, for the nameplate that'll go into the car, dropping off Chromebooks and picking up supplies, 100% of people made it and had transportation for that, or with assistance. So through that process, we know who those folks are. And what I'd like to make sure we say for our community who's watching is make sure you reach out to your school if you need assistance with that. We want to make sure that we provide help to anybody in our community. It's a big event, and we want every student to be able to be there.
That's so one, one car per graduate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry to ask all these questions, but, you know, we've gotten emails, too. We've gotten at least 50, 40 of them by now on the desire to walk and seeing if we could work that out in some way. But we're saying that's not possible.
The FAQ on the webpage, I have looked at that to help answer questions myself. So I think it's very good. I've been able to respond to people who have asked, just by reading the FAQ stuff on the graduation site.
Can you share how they get ahold of that graduation site?
It's on our homepage.
On the Cabarrus County Schools homepage, we have a graduation site link.
Yes, www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us.
Okay. Other board members for comments and questions on the graduation? Go ahead. No, yes, David, or no, David?
Yes, David.
Go ahead.
And Dr. Lauter, I mean this respectfully, but a few months ago, we passed a resolution that expanded the authority of the superintendent's role, or, in effect, or is this your decision? It certainly is your recommendation, and you've worked out the due diligence with the Speedway and the state, and done great work at that. But is, are these logistical details, in effect, your decision?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean.
Well, does the board have any role at this point in altering any of these logistics? Shouldn't, should the waiver worked out so well with the Speedway, but a point is still many people are asking us to make other arrangements that they think would be more appropriate, and the details have already been worked out.
I guess the answer would be, it depends on what the board's role wants to take. And as we said, I guess a neighboring school district voted to defy the governor, so I guess the school board can do that if that's what they're interested in doing. We obviously have signed a contract with the Speedway and would not recommend that we change how we're going to do graduation, you know, in a week and a half beforehand, but I guess that it depends on what role the board wants to take.
Okay, that's just the clarification I was asking for. Thank you.
Yeah, and as much as I would like to see the graduates walk, in the past, we have never voted on a venue for graduation, how the program was done. And based on the explanations we've received tonight, I think it is pretty clear, unless we completely change the dates of graduation, and the Speedway can give us a couple extra dates and we pay for it, that's the only way. So I think we would have as many people upset about changing the dates of graduation with 10 days to go, which would be just a whole second nightmare. So.
And this plan is very fair for everyone, as long as we can get transportation arranged for them.
Well, again, I just want to say how much I appreciate the Speedway's partnership, the Department of Public Instruction, which has been great, and Ben has been tremendous, that you know, as this situation has evolved, that we, you know, were given and worked with an alternative that met every criteria to make sure that people were safe and not exposed to something, and hopefully made something unique and special. So I, no graduation ceremony is perfect, we certainly had people. We've certainly had people complain about the way that we've done it in the past. So it's certainly, in my opinion, is a great option, the best one that we could come up with. But, you know, I guess the, the board will have to decide if they agree.
I mean, my preference would be for our kids to walk, be able to walk across a stage, um, and for folks to socially distance in the stands. But I'm not going to support going against the governor's, um, orders unless we get a waiver for it.
And, and I'm very interested in keeping the solid partnership with the Speedway. So that we abide by their terms and, um, have a well managed, well controlled, series of ceremonies for each of the high schools.
Barry or Carolyn, you want to wave in, wave in?
Well, um. Go ahead, Carolyn. I knew you were getting ready to start.
Well, I tried and I had my mic off. Well, one of the things to comply, uh, I don't think that we should definitely go against, uh, the statute that had, or the, the regulations that's been put in place. And again, if we went and, uh, went against what, uh, the gathering that has been set up, what statute that had, or not statute, but what is in place right now. If we had people in the stands, we would be going against that. And I would not want to see that because we're setting ourselves up. Plus possibly the, we would be setting our county up possibly, uh, maybe making the virus increase. And I think that would be wrong. And, uh, of course I would like to, I mean, I know that every, you know, what we have heard, of course, people would say, oh yes, we'd like to walk. And some people say, well, let our school do it because it's smaller, but I don't think that's fair. This board is always, we all know that we have to be fair to everyone. And it would be unfair to do it for one school and not do it for all of them. And we have to be fair to all our students. So we have to be, to what we do for one, we have to do for all. And I think this is, uh, what they have proposed right now is fair for all of them. And it's maybe not the very best thing, but it's what the best thing we can do in the situation of what we've got. And, uh, with staying within the guidelines, making it safe for everyone. And again, it's not the very, you know, what's ideal, but it's ideal for the situation of what we've got right now. And with what we've got to deal with and with the time, with the logistics, uh, with the time situation we've got. And, uh, you know, if we want, would want to carry it out four days, if, which is what it looks like. If we look at what the timeframe and everything, I think that's what we would probably be looking at with, well, how many people we've got. And did we find out how many graduates we've got right now? I didn't get to ask that question. How many graduating seniors do we have this year?
I do not have that pulled up right now, but it is around 2,500.
Uh, that's what I kind of guesstimated. We were talking earlier and we thought it was around 20. And with that, I think that's probably what, I mean, we would be looking at three to four days if, if we would do that. And I think with safety for the community, for the children, I mean, for the students and for everybody. I think we are, we've got our hands really tied with that. I mean, I would love to say, yeah, that's what we need to do. But I think the safety for everybody, I think we have no other choice to do that. And I think we'd be selfish if we did something other than that. Because I think we'd be endangering everybody if we did something else. I really do. Uh, I mean, I would love to say differently, but I, I don't think we've got any alternative than to do, do anything differently.
Did I, Karen, Barry?
Thank you, Carolyn. You take all the words out of my mouth and didn't leave me a whole lot of room to speak. So, um, Ben, you said that the state is actually going to provide us a photographer for this event and to photograph each of the students? Is that what I understood?
Yeah. So you guys are bringing up so many good points about, um, Rob saying this is a special event and make it walk. So what we've been trying to do is anything we can do to mitigate and, and make it a special experience. So, um, we're going to have three different photographic opportunities. But yes, the Department of Public Instruction is sending a professional photographer. As the students are leaving, um, she'll be taking a picture that we'll be able to capture. It won't have the principal in that one, but we'll have the, uh, folks from Life Touch who do a lot of the contracts for our schools for pictures. They'll be at the start finish line. Um, in addition to that, we'll have some automatic cameras, uh, one before and one after. Um, and as they're driving out, it'll kind of have a smile, smile, and you can hold it up. It's going to take looping pictures every two to three seconds. And I wish I had the company so I could give them a shout out tonight that we'll be working with. Uh, but they reached out to us and were providing the service for free. And one of their children is, uh, one of our graduates this year for this company. So an amazing technology plus the video. So, uh, we'll have lots of options. And then we'll have Mike Martin, um, and then other folks from DPI will be, uh, moving around, uh, taking candid shots, um, as well. So we're trying to just, you know, blanket it, um, with photographs and video, uh, to mitigate as much as we can and escalate that experience.
So will the video be like at each of the, so when each graduate comes across the finish line to get their diploma? Would the video actually be taking a picture of that student receiving the diploma or something like that?
And so we'll wait that the video, just like we would normally do at the arena, but it'll be much more, um, tight shot, a little bit more intimate. And as the student drives across, they'll be on that 16,000 square foot, uh, Speedway television as well for everybody there to see. And then it'll be pumped out live as well on YouTube.
Well, that sounds fun. Um, I think it's going to be a unique opportunity and something that will live in every child's memory. And, and I hate to say that this will live in their memory, but how many students will you know that'll graduate and say, you know, I graduated in 2020, which was definitely one of the most interesting and difficult years that we've ever faced, not only as, as a school, but as a nation. And, but we had something unique and different that was provided to us. And, and I'm, I'm just very happy that DPI was able to join in with the, the Speedway and, and assist us to make this thing happen. Because this is a grand opportunity to utilize the resources that are here in this county that not many places are blessed with. And so others are having to do different types of graduations, but I think this is going to be very unique. Having your child's picture and having, or having your picture up on a 16,000 square foot teletrum is, uh, is, is a really neat, uh, thought. And that people from far away can see each child as they get their diploma or each young lady and young man as they get their diploma. That's all I have.
Thank you, Barry. Uh, Laura, did you get an opportunity to weigh in?
No, but I would love to. Thank you. So I'm just, um, yes, I know we've gotten emails from, from folks who want their kids to be able to walk across the stage. And Rob, I, I totally understand that. I do. But to Barry's point, we have such an amazing opportunity. And, um, we have so many things in Cabarrus County and so many people that have stepped up to the plate to provide this as a unique opportunity for our seniors to have an amazing graduation. Probably one that no one else will ever get to have, knock on wood, I hope. That we don't have to go through this pandemic again. But, um, it's just an incredible opportunity, I think, for, for these young adults to be able to have a graduation that is, um, different, yes, but amazing, incredible. You know, something that they will remember forever and look back on. And what in a, what a great opportunity to, it's, you know, I think during this entire pandemic, I think we've learned so many lessons about how, you know, you have certain plans for things and things don't always turn out the way that you expect them to. But that doesn't make them any less special. So I just want to say kudos to everybody. Ben, you've done an amazing job. Um, I'm sure it's going to be a ton of fun and just a really great opportunity for everyone to celebrate all of the seniors out there. So that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Lauren. Go ahead, Carolyn.
One question, and I know this sounds odd, but I know when they were having the races and everything, they were still wearing their mask. Are we supposed to wear our mask? Because we will be around people, even though we're six feet apart. And I wear my mask when I'm out and around.
Yeah, um, we will be wearing masks, all Cabarrus County Schools employees, even those teachers, principals, anybody there will be wearing masks during those days. There will be some opportunities for those of us, of course, who are there all day long to take it off when we eat and, uh, are away from those things. But, uh, while students are there, um, we expect, uh, everyone to wear a mask for that safety procedures. Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, cause I, I do wear mine. And that's why I wanted to make sure, cause I do, how about gloves or just the mask? Cause I have my mask and gloves. I wear both, but I didn't know which one we were supposed to do.
Since you won't be interacting with the students or the cars, you don't need to wear gloves. Obviously that's a prerogative of each individual to wear what they need to feel safe. Our principals or anybody that's interacting with a vehicle, the diplomas, um, anything that they may come in contact with a student or something that would cut them in contact, wear our gloves and we'll follow all those protocols for, in the event of an exposure or a touch, to remove those, wipe down surfaces and then, uh, put on a new set. So we've got full, uh, personal protective equipment available for backup. And then schools, of course, will be bringing their own for their, their folks as well. Most of our principals have gotten, um, custom masks, you know, Adam Hourback with a, with a spider, you know, Cox Mills got their logo. So they're, they're, they're taking it up a notch and trying to, uh, kind of the lowest point, uh, make it a little fun.
Are you saying they have to change, change gloves every time they hand out a diploma?
In the event that the diploma or the principal touches the vehicle or touches a student's hand, as long as they touch the diploma only and, uh, not the student, then we're fine. So not every single time. But there's a, there's always going to be an opportunity for, um, a possible touch of a car door, a hand or something like that. So we just want to be prepared, uh, for any eventuality.
And the CDC guidance is if you cannot maintain six feet, you should wear the mask, mask.
That's correct.
I had asked, uh, Dr. Lauter about those signs we had seen where it said, congra, you know, each school that had their sign. Did you get us some of those that we could have?
We have a principals meeting tomorrow and I'll be meeting with the graduation coordinator. So we're going to try to get you as much swag as possible. So you can.
Sounds good. Okay, I'm, I'll shut up.
Do you else have a question?
I did, Rob.
Go ahead, now.
Hey Ben, so I just want to make sure we're clear on the picture taking, the photography. So how close are they going to be able to get to act if the, if the child or the student cannot get out of the car and stand beside it? How are they going to take the picture where it would be, uh, you know, real clear? I didn't catch all that part about the photography.
Well, we know that that's going to be a limitation, uh, being in the car, changing sunlight, different heights of vehicles, um, some occlusion just based on people. So that's why the main goal is to have as many photographic opportunities as possible to hopefully mitigate the, uh, accidental fact of someone's hand in front of your face while you're getting your diploma. So, um, can't guarantee, we've never been able to guarantee great shots. I know, um, as, as the principal shakes hands of kids in our normal years, I always try to hold them and tell them to look at the camera. Uh, but we're trying to mitigate that as, as much as possible. It has been expressed by our photographer that that's a tough thing. So doing everything we can. And hopefully he'll bring a, you know, a lens with a longer focal length and things like that to try to help.
So just playing devil's advocate here, how big a deal would it be for the student to actually just get out of the car, stand beside it? Them not have any type of contact, hand off the diploma and be able to take the picture a little better with a closer shot?
It, it kind of goes back to the, the very first part of the conversation today, which is time. Getting out of the car is a time factor.
Okay, I just hate it. You know, as, as much as I know there's been so much time and effort put into it and it is, you know, Charlotte Motor Speedway is a big deal, but I just, I hate that, you know, pictures might not be what they think. And, you know, there's just a lot of challenges there to overcome. I just thought maybe standing outside. I'm not sure opening the door, standing out, getting right back in would take that much additional time. But, you know, just knowing how much time we put into the effort of when we have them at the arena, you know, when they're walking, we put a lot of time and effort into it as well. So I just wanted to ask the question and get an answer.
Hey, this is Cindy. Um, Ben, just like, um, at the arena graduations, the principals were always given some guidance, you know, stand on the X, face this way, a little bit, you know, left shoulder open kind of thing to get the best shots. Maybe you guys can practice, um, and see and give the principals those guidance pointers again, to say, to make sure they're not doing a face on to the side of the car, but at an angle a little bit. So the graduate is guaranteed to be seen. So.
Sure. Um, I, I, I think you can maybe see this in this slide. You see these Xs? Let me turn my closed captioning off. And you can see those Xs that are on the Speedway. We'll have a similar thing. So we'll make sure that the principal has a spot, the photographer has a spot and the car has a stop spot. There'll be, um, Speedway staff there to help, uh, pace our, our cars. We'll have staff from the schools and staff from the ed center to help as well. We'll get better as they go on. Uh, as always, we'll have our small ones first, um, one to kind of help with pacing, uh, and two to, to help, you know, when you have a smaller school, you've got a little bit more time to play with. Uh, it's a little bit like a dress rehearsal. So you, uh, use that each year with the PLC and we'll have the early colleges in the PLC on our first graduations on Friday mornings.
So Ben, uh, my thought would be that's a great idea is to make sure y'all practice because, you know, you're not guaranteed where the student's going to be in the cars as they come through, according to how many peoples, you know, in there. Or is there a way for y'all to designate that the shot for your student would be, um, seated wherever inside the car so that they know?
We, uh, we, we've set an expectation.
Where the best shot would take place might be very beneficial.
Sure. We've set an expectation, one student per vehicle and the principals and schools are working, um, in the instance where that's not the case. So the student will be sitting in the front passenger seat, which should help us. Each student will have a name plate, it's got their name in really large font, uh, their school, and it'll be color coded, um, as well to help all of our staff that is coming through. So we, we're trying to think through all those contingencies. So far, I've been crossing my fingers. You haven't asked me a question, um, that I haven't thought of. Um, I don't have an answer for everything, but we, we have a lot of people, um, asking lots of questions and trying to shoot holes in this thing as well. So thank you guys for your questions tonight.
So our handicap students, has that been thought of, thought of?
Yes, uh, each school, um, whether it's at the arena or the Speedway, uh, we always consider, uh, language services, deaf and hard, hard of hearing services and disability services. So each school is responsible for notifying us, that's April Koval and myself, uh, about those needs. And then we work with the, um, appropriate personnel to make sure that that's taken care of.
Ben, this is David. Any graduation seems to have 20 or 25 administrators, uh, teachers, staff who are, uh, working crowd control, so to speak, at each graduation. But in this case, it sounds like all those people might be out in the blazing hot sun. Are we going to use the same number of, uh, staff members to help, uh, coordinate, uh, the movement of cars and, and students? Or is that going to be, um, at, at least more tolerable out in the, in the elements, um, for the staff? I can imagine it could be fairly miserable for, um, staff members if, if they're out, uh, kind of directing traffic.
So, um, I do want to give a quick shout out to the Cabarrus Sheriff's Office. Luanne and I met a few weeks ago and, um, she's going to be providing, um, with the Sheriff's Department, uh, law enforcement services, uh, for us this year. So we'll have law enforcement there. Uh, we also have the Speedway staff. I've gotten our staff needs from each school down to as small as we can do it. It's under 18, uh, which normally we're more in the range of 30 to 35, 40 staff. So we try to minimize that. April Koval, I've got Bart Tolbert and Leanne Havely. Leanne is our, uh, curriculum coordinator and Bart, of course, is our, um, K-12 arts coordinator. We're all going to be out there as kind of having an area for the all day event. Uh, we'll have cars with coolers and water, uh, sunscreen, uh, umbrellas in case we need it. And, you know, we'll take care of folks. Luckily with our graduations, there'll be 90 minutes to two hours each. We'll be able to get staff in and out. I'm more concerned about you all and our other all day guests. To make sure that, uh, David, you make sure and put all your sunscreen on the all day, uh, so they don't get bright red by the end of the day on Saturday.
Thank y'all for making it about the students.
Any other questions for Ben?
Hey, I'm sorry guys. I keep, I know I'm throwing some wrenches in here, but I'm just. just thinking. So, and Ben, I'm sure you're covering all of it, and I'm glad there's not been anything that's been asked that you can't answer. What, how are we going to address people needing to use the restroom or needing to address things like that? Are y'all dealing with that with the Speedway?
Yes. So Speedway's going to provide a limited number of restrooms for us, porta-johns. They'll be through turn three and four, and also in that drive-in area when they come in. Luckily, we won't be on the property too long, but we do know that accidents happen and emergencies happen, and people need the restroom facilities. So we'll have restroom facilities available.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we're still, don't think we can have guests attend this thing, even if they're spaced out, and sign a waiver?
Let me read the governor's order. I think that might be important here. Prohibition on mass gatherings. Mass gatherings are prohibited. Mass gathering means an event or convening that brings together more than 10 people indoors or more than 25 people outdoors at the same time in a single confined indoor or outdoor space, such as an auditorium, a stadium, arena, or a meeting hall. So that is a guideline, as we said, that another district has violated that I'm aware of. But we are, as again, I would not recommend to you that we violate that order. So what we did was work with the Speedway, again, want to say kudos to them and the Department of Public Instruction, who also worked with the Department of Health and Human Services to say, keeping these guys in the car and doing the ceremony the way you're doing it meets all the guidelines, you're good to go. And again, Ben has worked tirelessly with the Speedway to meet all the details, to make sure that it's safe and, you know, is a unique and hopefully a special ceremony.
Still sounds like a mass gathering to me, but okay.
Wait a minute, Rob. I don't understand. What do you mean?
If we're having all those people in an arena is a mass gathering?
Yeah, but they, because they're in cars, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services said this is an okay thing to do. So that's why we moved forward with the Speedway.
Okay, so I just think if that's okay, then we could probably at least ask to see if we can get folks in a big stadium like that has plenty of room. All right. I don't have anything else on the graduations specifically. I mean, I think it's, it's unique for our students. I think it's the best that we can, we could possibly do. I mean, it's kind of sad that they've missed their prom, they missed their awards. And I guess this week or next, they're missing the opportunity to walk the halls of the elementary school too. So it's a tough time, but at least it's a, it's a unique situation that we're taking the time to figure something out. And I thank you for all the work.
If you have any additional questions, feel free to ask them. Those are my way. We'll make sure we address those as best we can. Thanks for giving me some time.
Excellent. Chris, did you have anything else? I did learn this week that, thanks to the COVID-19, we're not going to have a foreign exchange of students next year. So I guess we'll rethink that next year.
That was the recommendation, that most universities are not having travel programs, not inviting people from other countries. I think there are times when, obviously, the president or other people have banned people from foreign countries. So I'm not sure how we could go forward with that, to be quite honest.
All right, that's all I have for that item. Ready to move on to the next one, which is 3.02 Quarterly Forecast. Back to you, Chris.
Yes, so we just, as usual, try to go over what's coming up in the next three months to make sure you're aware and also know, you know, if there's anything that you guys want to add. So for July, that's budget and budget amendments, construction updates, policy, our SMP food contracts, the instructional contract, which is one of our online resources. I think we're going to talk about one of those tonight. We'll talk about one in July. We will talk about and look at Wolf Meadow opening, because the board meeting will be there at the beginning of July. And then Wolf Meadow, right now, I think is scheduled for 22nd or the 24th of July. That'll obviously be the official beginning of our school year. And then the alternative accountability model, something the board has to vote on with our alternative school, and I think the PLC. In August, again, just the formal adoption of the budget and budget amendment, construction policy. There's a beginning teacher support plan on what supports we have set in place for our new teachers. That's something the board has to vote on. And then overall safety, and just kind of how we're going to handle the beginning of school. There's obviously going to be a lot of things that come down over the next few months. And then in September, again, budget and budget amendments, construction updates, policy, and then we'll begin to work on the 2021 academic calendar. So if there are questions about that, or if there's something that you guys are missing or like to have, make sure that we add to present, then we'll certainly try to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I thought I heard Dr. Lauter just say we're having our meeting at Wolf Meadow in July?
No, I was saying that our school will, the school year will officially open when Wolf Meadow opens, which will be in mid-July.
I'm open for that, but we hadn't planned on it yet.
Well, no, I think that's a risk. I mean, and we're not even sure what school opening looks like yet, so.
Yeah, well, there's no plans on it at this point.
Yeah, and again, who knows? I mean, it could be a different opening in July, depending on what guidance we get. But right now, that would be the official beginning of the 2021 school year. And so we said at the beginning of July, we'll try to tell you everything we know and what the opening of Wolf Meadow will look like.
We do have an opening for our elementary, new elementary school, and then a new high school, kind of groundbreaking for middle school, right?
Yes, we were trying to figure, I think we talked at the last board chair and vice chair review of, did we want to keep those in plan? Is there anything that we want to change since we're on a different, you know, calendar, as far as some of this stuff is concerned? So I think we left them in place, but right now, I guess that's able to be modified, depending on, you know, what phase two, phase three looks like, and when they come in and come off. So we can certainly add to, I think you guys already have those dates, but they could obviously change. So right now, we can send back out, Mindy, if, Ms. Abbott, if you don't mind, if you'll just send the board the reminders of when the dedications of the high school and the elementary school, and then I think the groundbreaking of the middle school are all things that we'll send to you guys again.
Do we need to do anything with the expansion of the home rates or the virtual academy?
We're going to move, as I said, gave an update to board members. We're going to talk to our principals about it tomorrow, and then we'll be advertising that across the district.
But there's no action the board needs to take on that?
Nope.
Okay. Anything else, board members? All right, we'll move on. So we have items for the consent agenda for next week. We have budget amendments. And Kelly Klutz, are you on the line?
Yes, sir, I'm here. Good evening, Board. We have our budget amendments before you. First one being our state budget amendment, small reclass of restart funds. And then you'll see the next, the next item is for our Indian Gaming Funds. Those come in about this time of year. Every year, we expect those funds. I've already got purchase orders in for those. Then our normal substitute reimbursement, and then a small reclass for our DSSF funds. Any questions on the state? We'll go to the next one. Dane, please. Local, you'll find an increase in our charter school allotment. As you know, we pass through those funds. The county gives us those funds, and we send them, those to charter schools. Within the last couple of months of each of these years, the county and the school system does an evaluation and account. From the last time the county funded us, they funded us its 2,144 charter school students. Since then, we have a record count of 2,289 students. That is, as of the better of the first or second month for charter schools. And so therefore, that we needed an increase of our funds, 286,124, so that we could break even as we transfer those funds over to the charter school. The county has appropriated those funds, and we have those.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Kelly, that's based on the better of the first or second month. So if the student comes back to the traditional public school district, Cabarrus County Schools, and they're in our school at this point, do we still pay them because they were counted in that first or second month?
No, we only pay them if, we check the enrollment every single month that we get an invoice, and check to be sure that they're still enrolled in our schools. And if they are not, we do not send that money.
Okay. Because I know we had talked before that that has happened on occasion.
So on this, on the state side, for the money that the state gives the charter school, they evaluate that on the first or the second month, or the first month of the state level. And then they send all those monies to the charter school. Now, the state money, I do not get any of that money back. But local, because we manage it, we check enrollment every single month.
Okay.
Any reason for the increase?
I'm sorry?
Any reasons for the increase?
It's a fairly normal, consistent increase that we've seen over the last three or four years. Obviously, those years that we had new charter schools pop up, we had bigger increases. But the last couple of years has just been a fairly steady, normal increase. We're still just a tiny bit lower than the average for counties that have charter schools in them. So we're doing okay.
It's still more than a quarter million dollar increase over last year, right?
Right, right. Okay, so we'll go to the next one. Dane, please. This is our federal budget adjustments. Most of these are very minor in nature. We did get some flexibility granted to us due to COVID. So some of these, these budget codes, these federal budget codes, there were some staff development and things, that type of thing that was in the budget. And obviously, we can't do that now because of COVID. So we were able to get some leniency so that we could move those funds around and buy some supplies and materials that we can use for students. Okay, we'll move on to the next one, Dane. Capital Outlay, this is the funds that we had requested from the county, 221,500 for the roadwork at West Cabarrus High School. And you guys have already approved this request. The county's already given us the money, and this is just the budget amendment to catch up the books. Okay, are there any other questions?
Okay.
Recommend consent.
Does everybody agree to put that on consent?
Consent.
Anybody opposed to that? All right, well, that'll be on our consent agenda for next week.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. 4.02, we have continuing budget resolution.
Yes. This is a continuing budget resolution that will allow us to continue to operate in the normal position as of July the 1st. I am extremely confident that we will not have a state budget on July the 1st. So we'll need to approve the budget resolution so that we can continue in our normal capacity. Are there any questions?
We pretty much do this every year?
Yes, sir, we do.
This will be the second year without a state budget, is that correct?
No, there's been many years that we haven't had a state budget. Actually, most years, we don't have a state budget on July the 1st. You know, often it'll come in August or September. But as we know, we didn't adopt our budget in Cabarrus County Schools until January of 2020 for the 1920 school year due to the timing of the state's budget. Hopefully, it'll be better than that this year.
Okay, are we okay for putting on this on consent?
Consent.
Yes.
Okay, anybody opposed to that? All right, we will put that on consent as well. And we've got one more for you.
Yes.
This is the correction to the budget documents that you approved last month.
Yes. And Dane, while I'm talking for a minute, can you go to page 19, please? So Board, this is the document that you proposed. It's the proposed budget that we're submitting to the county. And once, when we pulled that information over, we realized that there was a sorting error on the spreadsheet. It was just picking up one information from one document and putting it into the other. So the sort was wrong. You're close, Dane, keep going. And we wanted to, right here, here's where we start. So we just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of the corrected amounts. The justification documents that we shared with you and the information that we went over was correct. It just literally got on the slide incorrectly. So we put red Xs on the original amount and giving you the corrected amount. And if you'll go down two more slides, Dane, you'll see that the in total that did not change, because it was simply they were sorted wrong. But the total amount is the same. Do we have any questions on that?
But the justification documents still have the correct amount?
That's correct.
The county has those too, right?
Yes. And I've communicated with the county when we found out we had this error, and we're on the same page. And I'll just send this over after you guys adopt it, just to be official.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could we ask that this document with the correction be put in last month's board docs? Because some of us go back and look at documents, like in the next year, and then we'll be looking at the wrong one.
So like put both of them in there, or is it just?
They can both be in there, and maybe Mindy can just title it dash corrected or something. Just so we don't look at the wrong document in a year or two.
Brian Shaw, you want to weigh in on that? That's okay. Board Attorney Brian Shaw, you on?
Yeah. I have no problem, as long as it's documented. And perhaps if Mindy puts corrected, and then June 1, 2020, so anybody looking at it can follow what happened. I do think Cindy makes a good point, because somebody looking for that budget's not going to look for the next month to see if there might be a correction.
Yeah.
Unless it's notified, noticed in there.
And it's really just an amendment of the previous documentation.
Right, and really a correction. I think corrections can be made. It's just good to have a paper trail of what we do. So we just note that. I'd put the first page and the second page. I mean, have the original page, and this has corrected June 1, 2020.
That's correcting a discrepancy, because I guess the justification pages that explain what the projects are has the correct number.
Yeah, Mindy, Mindy could even mark it as corrected page 19 and 21, I think it was.
There's three.
I just would hate to look at it next year and say, this doesn't look right, Kelly, and then forget that we had modified it.
Yeah, I agree. That makes sense to me.
Okay, Board, are we okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Are we okay with putting that on consent, or do we want to vote on it again?
Consent.
Consent's fine.
Okay. Thank you, Kelly, for your time.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to 4.04, which is policy revisions for approval on first reading. Brian Schultz and Sue Burns, are you on?
Yes. Good evening, Chairperson Walter, members of board, Dr. Lauter. We have four policies for new reading this evening, for first read, I'm sorry. It's policy 2302, remote participation in board meetings. If you remember, this policy, we did actually review and revise. Recently, the PLS came out as an additional revision to follow in line with the Session Law 2020-3, that then became General Statute 166A19.24. And that was a realignment in state statute based on the COVID-19 situation that we're in. So all the items that you see in blue are revisions following that. And you obviously can see the headers there, really looking at the definitions and the circumstances, and just all the alignments that fall in line with that new general statute. In addition, we have policy 4400 on attendance, really some, just a minor revision there that gives principals some authority on days that are, days missed, accumulated days that are missed, more than 10 and less than 20. And you'll see the revision on page four of that policy. We have a new policy, teleworking, which obviously is applicable. That's policy 7503, applicable to this current COVID-19 time that we're in. So it's teleworking for employees. And then finally, we have policy 76. And then finally, we have policy seventy-six twenty, which is, uh, regarding payroll deductions, making some revisions to, uh, items that can be, uh, included in payroll deductions. So I'll stop there and just open it up to any questions, uh, regarding any of those policies in particular. Well, we could, we can just start with policy twenty-three oh two, that's the remote participation. Uh, so does anybody have any comments or questions on that? All right, and then, um, I'll, I'll move on, any on forty-four hundred? Again, the, the change was on page four, uh, of that attendance policy. And just according, uh, allowed some flexibility for the principal to require document, to, to require documentation or not based on the circumstance, uh, essentially between eleven and nineteen absences there. And then, uh, move to seventy-five oh three, that's the teleworking, uh, policy and, uh, thanks to Ms. Jones for her hard work on that. Uh, and, uh, again, really fitting the situation that we're in as, as most are teleworking, uh, in the school system. And then finally, seventy-six twenty, that's the payroll deductions. And, uh, a big thanks to Kelly and her expertise on that one as, as well. And again, the, uh, Policy Committee met, reviewed all these and recommended them for, uh, first read and approval. Any board members? We've got any questions?
Can you review again for how, if, if staff wants to review these or public wants to review these, how they can review them and give you feedback on it?
Sure, yeah, Ms. Burns, uh, will you address that, please?
Sure, um, on the, uh, Cabarrus County website, on the Board of Education page, there's, um, an area that is called Policies Up For Revision. And they can click on that and it will give them the policies that are up for first read and the second read and then the summary of changes. And then there's a link to board docs where they can, um, look at the actual policies with changes.
But if they want to give you feedback, that's, there's not options to do that?
Yeah, there's a link, um, they can just click on that and it'll go directly to me.
Thank you for that. Okay, Board, anyone, do you want to pull any of these for voting or put them all on consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Okay, anybody opposed to putting them on consent? Okay, well, I'll make sure those will all be on the consent agenda for next, next week. We'll move on to four point oh five, which is policy revisions for approval on second reading. And we have a few of those.
Yes, and thank you for that. Uh, we have three that are for second read, uh, with very little comments last time on this. Uh, and, uh, as a segue to your last question, uh, Chairperson Walter, we did see public input on that and did not receive, uh, any comments. So we had policy forty-two thirty, communicable diseases, uh, with students. And that was a, included a kind of a broader definition beyond, uh, what the, the former, uh, policy was really, uh, regarding HIV and AIDS, uh, really included a broader definition of communicable diseases. Uh, we had policy fifty fifty, which addressed emergency closings, uh, really some changes regarding communication there. And then lastly, we had policy seventy-three sixty slash eighty-two twenty-five, uh, regarding crowdfunding. So again, uh, would recommend these for approval and we did not have any feedback from the public.
Okay, Board, did you review these again and anything else that popped in your head before we either add them to consent or vote on for next week? Hearing nothing, do we want to put it on consent?
Yes.
Everybody okay with that? Anybody opposed to it? All right, we will have that one also, those will also be on consent agenda for next week. And our last one for consideration for consent agenda for next week would be, uh, four point oh six, storm drain easement at WR Odell Elementary School. And Mr. Louder, Mr. Cohn, are you online?
Hey, Rob, I'm in line with you tonight.
Great.
This is a request by a developer adjacent to the Odell School site. Um, and right now our water just, uh, is discharged from the back of the, um, bus parking lot via the flared-in section. Of course, once he develops a property, that water can't just fill across the property line and spread out like it does now. He'll have to pipe it through into his storm drain system as he develops the property. And so what they're doing is requesting the, uh, easement to be able to come up to our flared-in section, install the pipes that tie the indirect to their storm drain system.
When would that be done?
I asked that question, it's going to be probably dealt with in the next eighteen months to two years, depending on how long it takes them to do the development.
Questions from Board members?
Yeah, Rob, I have, um, a question for Tim. Will someone like Brian or you or someone from your team, um, kind of monitor what they're doing with that when the work does happen?
Yes, ma'am, once the work starts, they'll let us know, we'll definitely go by and check on it and make sure it's installed, uh, to our satisfaction on the property as they tie into our system.
Okay.
There's a, there's a, uh, a photograph or aerial photograph that shows you kind of the location it is. You can see it's just right below our bus garage, you can slide it up there, Dane. It's just that area right there below the bus garage, so. And it's actually down the hill, we probably never knew they were there unless they told us they were coming.
So it's not where any students would be?
Well, like I say, it's, it's probably fifteen feet down the slope below the bus parking lot, so. It goes into the, to the exterior woods beside us. So no, it wouldn't be, I mean, you see it, obviously, the playground of the, the basketball court is probably within fifty to a hundred feet of it, but that's all. By the way, Cabarrus County is the one that actually will grant the easement as they still have ownership of the property. It's just comes to you for your attention.
And if we have any objection to it, which you're saying that we don't, so, probably shouldn't.
Those are not.
Is there actually like a document that says we're granting the easement? Because this is just the picture.
There's the easement doc, there's the, uh, survey of the document and they've got the eas, the Cabarrus County actually has the easement itself. Because Cabarrus County, we actually wouldn't, uh, this is just a survey of it so that we know what's going on. So I did, it's just, it's basically, one, if you had total objection to it, and also mostly just for your, um, as for the information is that, you know, actually the grant easement document will be signed by Cabarrus County.
So Rob doesn't need to sign anything?
No, ma'am, it'll be signed by, by Mr. Downs.
Okay.
And there's no revenue from this or anything?
Sir, I don't know that, that's, that's been negotiated with Jonathan Marshall in the county, so I, I don't know. But he's taking it to his board tonight so I can find out tomorrow if they decided to put a, a dollar on it or something.
But Tim, it's no dollar amount for us, right? In other words, they may have to do something with it, but there's no, there's nothing involved with us, correct?
No, sir, there's not.
Board members, any comments? Are we okay with this? Anybody object to it? Okay, Tim, we're, I guess we're okay with it, so.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure, I'm not sure we have to vote on it, though. I don't even know if we have to put it on consent, if you're just saying it's for information.
I mean, if you'd like to vote to tell Cabarrus County you're okay with it, that's fine, we can do that, I guess.
Yes, you'll need to vote on it, it's a land transaction. Brian, if you want to speak to that at all?
Yeah, this is Brian Shaw. Uh, I have not seen the easement, so I don't know what it would look like because I guess the county's going to be putting that together. But I think in any event, uh, it's good to have a formal vote
Okay.
on it, just to show there's no opposition to it, yeah.
So we'll wait for a copy of the easement, we'll put it on action for next week. All right, so we'll move on to items for consideration for action at the June eighth board meeting of next week. So first one is five point oh one, our Title One Plan. We have Ms. Reeves and Ms. Legel, are you online with us?
We are.
Yes, we are here, good evening.
And you have, you have a presentation for us?
We do, yes. Uh, good evening, uh, Chairman of the Board, members of the Board and Dr. Louder. Uh, my name is Reeves and I am the proud Director of Elementary Education in Title One.
Um, good evening, and this is Amy Legel, Title One Coordinator for Cabarrus County Schools.
And we are here today to present the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one Title One Program Plan. So we'd love to begin by first, um, just sharing a few celebrations from Title One. Um, and that begins with, in the spring of two thousand nineteen, uh, we actually received an audit report of no findings based on our federal compliance audit. Um, so this is in addition to the yearly audit that we received. So every four years, we receive a federal compliance audit. So we were extremely excited, um, to celebrate that news with you all today.
That's great news. Well done.
And additionally, um, we would also like to celebrate all of our schools and their hard work. Um, so a hundred percent of our Title One schools met or exceeded growth based on the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen academic school year.
Is that the first time that's happened?
That is not.
Go ahead, Sarah.
I was going to say, that is not the first time that has happened, no, but, uh, definitely an accomplishment that we wanted to celebrate.
Mm-hmm.
Um, good evening, this is Amy Legel. I would first like to share with you, um, a big picture overview of Title One. We do have specific budget and program requirements that we have to follow. Uh, we would first like to share that Title One is the largest federally funded program, uh, for education. And Title One funds serve about twelve point five million students. Most of them are in grades first through sixth grades and another twelve percent are in preschool and kindergarten programs. Um, currently Title, uh, Cabarrus County Schools serves ten elementary schools and one middle school. We do have several funding requirements, um, that I would like to share with you. First and foremost, Title One funds supplement and do not supplant local and state funds. So they go above and beyond local and state funds. Those funds support only the schools that are identified as Title One. All teachers and paraprofessionals meet state certification and licensure requirements. We must serve schools at or above seventy-five percent poverty or show comparable local state funding support. And we do serve and fund schools in rank order of poverty as determined by free and reduced percentages and our CEP data, which is the direct certification. Um, and the primary goal is to increase student achievement with special attention to students and families most vulnerable and not meeting standards of proficiency. We'd like to also share with you the budget process that we follow. Uh, this is this past school year's, uh, fiscal year Title One budget. So here you can see our initial allotment amount, the carryover and the total budget. Uh, we typically each year expect to receive eighty-five to ninety-five percent of our previous, previous year's Title One budget. Um, so this fiscal year, uh, we did receive ninety-five percent of the previous year's budget. Um, and the amount of carryover we do typically receive to expect some carryover each year, uh, and we cannot go over fifteen percent. So, uh, we have not received our planning allotment yet for the year twenty twenty, twenty-one, but we do expect to receive still the eighty-five to ninety-five percent.
Okay, um, Rob, is, can I ask a question now?
Is it okay to interrupt your presentation, ask questions during it, or you want to wait till the end?
No, that, that's fine, whatever works for y'all.
Okay, Cindy, go ahead.
Okay, Amy, when you say, um, you expect to receive ninety-five percent of the previous year, I know you can, you know, go in then and add back in the carryover and so on, and that just becomes a rotating process. But year over year, have we been receiving the same or more Title One money since we continue to grow?
So we typically honestly still receive about the same amount. It's typically been, um, either ninety-five percent to ninety-eight percent. Um, so it's always on that higher end of the eighty-five to ninety-five percent. But, um, you know, and it all comes down to the formula too, how many, you know, our enrollment and our at-risk percentage as well. But it's, it's typically been ninety-five to ninety-eight percent.
Well, what I'm saying mathematically, if you receive ninety-five percent year over year, you're getting a five percent reduction every year. So that tells me we're getting less every year.
Um, so, yeah, I just, I don't know if I can answer your question right now, but, um, I can look historically, you know, year after year and, and how our enrollment has increased year after year as well. Um, but it's typically around the same, either ninety-five to ninety-eight percent.
Amy, this is Kelly, may I help?
Yes.
Um, so unfortunately, Cindy, um, I think that where you're going is correct. Um, with all of our federal programs, um, they diminish just a little bit year to year. Um, and then when you consider the benefits associated with it, we have less purchasing power, um, with those federal funds. Unfortunately, just federal funds, um, do not keep up with the salary and benefit increases. Um, and then, of course, we have our, our growth too. Um, so we really don't get, um, adequate increases every year and it probably is just a little bit less purchasing power every year that we go.
Okay, Kelly, could you possibly do the last five to eight years just by school year and how much we had versus the ADM count? I'm just curious if that's an area we need to advocate for more. I know it's bigger than a breadbox because it's a national decision.
Sure.
But I think we maybe need to pay more attention to this number.
Sure, I can pull those numbers for you. I would, I definitely will want to pull out carryover because that would sway the number. So you would want to look at each allocation per year.
Right.
Um, and then we just have to remember too, um, we're one piece of the pie. So, you know, a different district in the state or different state can get more because their poverty or their wealth may be changing from year to year, more so than ours. So those are factors that are also, um, part of it, but certainly I can pull that.
Okay, thank you, because it's going to be interesting with all, all the unemployment right now. The needs are going to be greater in this next school year and maybe the one or two after that as well.
The carryovers, that amount that we didn't spend?
Correct, now remember, um, the federal programs year is very different than our school year. So it doesn't start till, um, I think it's November the first. So in, we really do need to have some carryover every year so that we can complete our school year.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Yeah, because it's October to October, right?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Okay, thank you, Kelly, any more questions regarding this slide? Okay, I would like to take us to the, um, next slide, which is a good visual, um, to share with you. We do have required set-asides that we hold at the district and the next screen will show you what those set-asides are. However, um, although they're set aside at the district level, uh, they are still pushed down to school support or the school allocations. So for example, of our total budget, eighty-six point five percent of that does go to the schools. Um, and then the thirteen percent are, are required district set-asides. Um, this next screen does show you a list of the required set-asides. Uh, for example, the first bullet, the parent and family engagement do to set that aside initially when we get our allotment and then however we our allocations. Um, the next few bullets are a lot of John Basilis's program, like neglected and delinquent youth, homeless children, uh, youth and foster care. So those do have school support. Um, so of the thirteen point five district set-asides, twelve point five percent still supports the school and the administrative cost to help, uh, implement and monitor the federal program is one percent. Um, and it's important to note that administrative cost, the max is twelve percent, but we do keep it. but we do keep it very low at 1%. Okay, we do use sources to allocate funds to Title I schools. I'm sorry, was there a question?
Yes, on the prior slide, the last one, private school participation. Can you explain that a bit?
Yes. Yes, private school participation. Private schools are eligible to receive Title I services. So we consult with private schools each year. We have a meeting with them to share with them what the equitable services looks like. And just for example, in order for them to have those services, if a student is at a private school and they are actually zoned for AT Allen, and if the private school can show that that child is at risk, either through a survey or any other documentation, then private schools can have equitable services. So we do consult with private schools every year, set aside funds if we have to. However, historically, private schools have, they've not wanted the equitable services that we can provide for them.
Thank you.
So the sources that we use to allocate funds to Title I schools, we have what you're more familiar with, the free and reduced lunch percentages, which are determined by household applications. We do have the CEP Community Eligibility Program. Those are determined by various data sources like foster care, making evento stamps, et cetera. And that is where all students receive free breakfast and free lunch. So we do have some of our Title I schools that use free and reduced lunch applications and some that use the agency data like foster care. Here is our list of free and reduce or community eligible Title I schools. So we have 10 elementary Title I schools and one middle school served as Title I.
Now, weren't, last year, weren't there more?
No, we've, we've had 11 each year. So last, this past school year was 10 elementary and one middle, and then previously it was 11 elementary schools. Our Brown dropped off because they were, I believe, so yeah, still at 11 schools.
Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry, what?
I am.
You may have lost the audio.
And the, and the slides, I have them up separately, but.
Is she still trying to reconnect?
The slides are still showing on my end.
Not on here.
Not on there?
Nope.
Nope, it's dead over here.
Hang on, I'll close it and reshare. We're still broadcasting the slides from what he's seen.
No, they're talking about the slide. I'm getting all of them.
You're getting slides?
I'm getting everything that's still on.
You can't rejoin because the presenter left.
You're hearing me, but he's not.
I believe we're on page, or slide 14.
Dane, all I see are the people that are logged into this conversation, and that's it.
Got you. Sounds like the Skype may have had an issue there because the streaming is also dead. Holly had some issues a minute ago. Hers went dead, so it may have grown.
There was Holly?
She was trying to reconnect. She was going to try to dial in as well, too. I don't know if she's back on yet or not. I have not heard, she has not texted back.
Okay, well, we'll need to move this to action since we've lost the board member.
Let's see if she's in the list. I do not see her. Holly, she's showing in the list. Holly, are you there?
Dane, your screen is back up, by the way. We can see it now.
Okay, good.
Would you like me to continue?
We would. Dane, you need to clear, bring the presentation back to where we can see it.
Got it. Do you see the presentation now?
Awesome, yes, I can see it. Can everyone else see it now? Sorry, I'm back on. I just got kicked off.
Oh, must.
Sorry.
Awesome, so I'll continue. So one of the key components of Title I is developing a school-wide program, and this includes 10 components that is aligned to the school improvement plan goals for those years. And so some of the specific highlights that we would like to point out specifically as it relates to highly qualified staff as well as professional development. And then on the next slide, additionally, specific elements related to parental and family engagement as well as integration of federal, state, and local services as it relates to compliance and support. So throughout the court, throughout the course of the year, we host several different stakeholder venues to receive input from various stakeholders related to the Title I plan. And this includes parent representatives, school administrators, district leaders, and teacher leaders in meetings in the fall, winter, and spring. So how do our schools utilize Title I funding? Primarily, it relates to human capital. So specifically finding supports that relate to the alignment of the school improvement plan goals. And this includes, but is not limited to teachers, contract tutors, interventionists. Additionally, schools use Title I funds to support with professional development before, after school tutoring. And then, of course, as Amy shared previously, parent and family engagement events and resources as well as instructional supplies and materials. And we monitor this process closely throughout the school year, meeting with principals as well as representatives. And then also, we evaluate the full Title I program during our annual review meeting at the end of the year. So we appreciate your support. And so we are going to be asking that next week for your approval for our Title I plan. And at this time, are there any additional questions?
Usually, we get the actual plan to review, since I think Mr. Walter has to sign it. So can we just have that sent to us to look over?
Amy, are you on?
Yes, can you hear me? I'm so sorry, but I'm so sorry about that. So we enter our Title I plan into a grant management system called CCIP, and it's a consolidated application system. So it includes all of the other federal programs like Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV. So it's very consolidated. But what we can do is, we can certainly, if you want to see the plan just for Title I in a nutshell, is maybe just have the goals and the fiscal resource tied to it. However, when we submit our application in CCIP, Dr. Louder signs the assurances page for us, and we upload that and send it through.
Okay, but we have to approve it, right?
Cindy, did you sign it last year's chair?
No.
Right, yeah, I don't remember it, but I do remember in the past that I had found errors some years ago on what was listed and misspellings and whatnot, so I like to review it.
This is Crystal. I just wanted to follow up with what Amy said. Everything is entered electronically in a, it's called CCIP. All of those grant applications are submitted electronically. The Board is not required to sign. Many years ago, prior to the development of CCIP, the plan was typed in more of like a Word or a format. It was printed off and presented to the Board, and the Board had to sign off on it. But that is no longer the case.
Can it be exported to a PDF?
It cannot be exported to a PDF. Like Amy said, she can definitely go in and cut and paste. It would be labor-intensive, but she's volunteered to do that. She can go through and cut and paste all of those buckets, even though it may not make sense because it is tied to the bigger grant application piece.
Well, I guess I'd like for y'all to think about, if you're asking for me to vote affirmatively on something, I like to see what I'm voting on, not an interpretation, put in a PowerPoint. So that's just me. I found too many little issues in the past, which is why I'm known as the one who reads everything, so.
There used to be a spreadsheet that was provided to the Board every year as well?
Yes, so you asked that question earlier, Mr. Walter, and I believe that was Ms. Reeves responded to you. Typically, we do have our planning allotment by the end of April, beginning of May. However, we do not have that planning allotment at this time. We also are unclear on the actual percentages for free and reduced lunch and CEP. So just wanted to pass that along. And also, just want to remind the Board on the very first slide that we provided that, you know, our last, go back to that last, when we had our last federal compliance audit that is based on that actual application every year along with our spending practices and following state, federal, and local guidelines. But there was no findings reported on that. But as soon as, you know, just to follow up with your question, Mr. Walter, as soon as we do receive that information, we'll be happy to send it to you.
And that's, but that's after you've, you've put in the application?
No, we can't put in the application until we have those dollar amounts. But we will be, what, what we do usually send to you every year, Ms. Burtonbaugh is correct, what we do send to you is a spreadsheet of the actual amount, the dollar amount that each school receives. It gives you a very detailed amount for the number of students that are at risk and the dollar amount for each student that's at risk and the total dollar amount. It also lists the specific amount for set-asides at the district level.
That's, I think, well, I think that's what we remember. Is there, so we'll have that by next week, you're saying?
Well, we would have hoped to have it by now. If we don't have it by next week, I can certainly have Dr. Louder talk to you about pulling it from the agenda. Again, we would have expected to have it by now. We're hoping that we had received it today. We have been told by DPI that it should be any day now. So we wanted to certainly leave this on the agenda in the event that that information does come. And as soon as it does, we will definitely send it to you.
Okay, so we'll have it on our action item for, for next week and hopefully be able to vote on it then.
One, and so this will have, how much each school would be getting then on this sheet you're talking about? Because that's the sheet that I was used to seeing.
Yes, ma'am, that, that is the sheet that you're used to seeing. And we do not have that right now because we don't have the free and reduced lunch percentages. We also do not have the schools that are CCP, and we also do not have an actual budget.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, other board members have any questions or any other information you'd like to see for next week? Okay, hearing none, I guess it's okay to move on to the next item?
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, for your, for your help there.
Thank you.
All right, next is Career and Technical Education Application for State and Federal Funding. Mr. Parker, are you online?
Yes, I'm on here. Good evening, everyone.
Welcome.
I'm gonna try to share my screen here.
And you also have a presentation for us?
I do, yes, sir. Dane, you may need to run it for me.
You need to take over, Rusty, or do you have it?
And I'll just talk as you run through it. Thank you.
Okay, you need to unshare your screen then?
There it goes. It's really slow.
Rusty, all I see is, which one of these files do you want me to show? CTE Local Account, Signature Page, Assurances, the presentation?
Yes, the presentation. Should be a PDF.
Yes, sir. There you go.
Hey, thank you. That's it. I put together an overview of the local plan for CTE for this year. And back in February, I presented during CTE month, and I went over a lot of the performance indicators and a lot of our success stories back in February. So rather than repeating a lot of that, I was going to jump in and just show you an overview of what the new application looks like with Perkins Five. So the slide that, go ahead, Dane, you got it. Go to the next one. There's a couple of changes to the application since we've entered into a, a new iteration of Perkins Legislation. And the first part of it is performance indicators, which is very similar to the old application. But part two is the new piece where it talks about a comprehensive local needs assessment. And then now the application also requires us to tell the career pathways that we, that we offer within our school district. Some of the changes for performance management. In the past, Career and Technical Education was, was asked to, I guess, show the federal government through data that we were supporting ELA and also mathematics and how students performed in those areas. The additional performance indicator this year is now a science component. So part of our performance indicators are how well we're supporting science initiatives through CTE. And biology, the biology EOG will be that. The inclusion of credentials is also a big piece of it. I'm sure all of you have heard about the credentials that we're offering throughout the district. But credentials now is actually a performance indicator. In the past, it was not. So in the, starting July 1, credentials will also be a performance indicator for CTE. And one thing that I'm very excited about is the last bullet on the slide. The Perkins Legislation is changing what we call end-of-course assessments to proofs of learning. And one of the pieces of a proof of learning now is a performance assessment. So some courses that lend themselves a lot better to a performance evaluation rather than just a 100-question multiple-choice test, they won't have that anymore. They'll be able to show through performance what they're able to do, and that will count as their assessment. One piece of performance is also to talk about the, the third-party vendors that we work with. So there's a section there that talks about Learning Labs, Naviance, Project Lead the Way, NCCR, and then National Academy Foundation. This is just a sampling of some of the vendors that we work with. Learning Labs is the company that provides our robotics equipment at Jam Robinson, Central Cabarrus, and then Northwest. And they're also the company that is providing our flight simulators for the new aviation program at West Cabarrus. Project Lead the Way is the vendor that we use for curriculum at Northwest Cabarrus High School's Health Sciences Academy. And then Naviance is the vendor that we work with, or Hobson is the name of the company. Naviance is the product that we use to do career development activities with students. And then NCCR is the curriculum for all of our trades programs. And I think all of you are pretty familiar with the one in the middle. That's National Academy Foundation. We have five NAF academies in our district. Also, for performance management, is showing how we support the graduation rate. And the CTE concentrator graduation rate still stands at 99%. So right now, any student that's completed a four-course concentration in the CTE area, they, they move on to graduation. So CTE keeps kids in school, is what we like to quote a lot. Part two is the comprehensive local needs assessment. This year, we conducted it with internal and external stakeholders to find out some information about what should we focus on for the coming years in CTE. And one that rose to the top on most every study that we, or every survey or interview that we had was career awareness. We are working now to We are working now to develop a process where every student in the district in the middle school will take a career interest inventory and then hopes of helping them plan for our school choice options. And so that, that is one thing that we will be implementing in the fall is a student career interest inventory. But that also goes in hand-in-hand with one other need that we saw, which was developing a true career development plan for every student. So there's already a planned place to start working with career development as an initiative at the middle school levels specifically. Thank you, Dane. Go ahead. The next one was pathways document. We, we were asked several times to create a pathways document that was tailored to Cabarrus County schools. The one that my department uses now is a state-level document that shows all of the pathways and that's really the one we share with school counselors and principals. But we are in the process now developing one that's just for Cabarrus County schools. We hope to have that done. The deadline for us is December 1st, but it will be completely revised well before that date. But we are working on a true pathways document that's just for Cabarrus County schools. The third one is how we promote CTE. You might remember probably about two years ago, CTE went through a rebranding and we created a new logo and a new tagline. We created some information that we shared with the business community. So we created a document that showcased the CTE programs, but it was really designed for the Chamber and the EDC and external stakeholders to use when they talk to companies that are considering coming to Cabarrus County. So the plan for this coming fall is to take that, that information and turn it inward toward our parents and students so that parents and students actually can take part in that and see what programs we offer and what options are available to them. One, one major focus is also to include special population students. A big piece of the Perkins legislation is how are we supporting special pops kids? And so our marketing program will be focused on that. The next one is part three was talking about career pathways. One change within the Perkins application is we have to show which pathways we're offering within our district or which ones we currently have. And the ones that you see on the, on the slide, we have a really strong STEM program. Robotics and engineering, I think all of you are familiar with. We have really strong programs there. But also computer science and IT, and then in the fall we'll be adding the aviation aerospace piece. We have a very strong health sciences program in our district. We have a really good partnership with Cabarrus College of Health Sciences and our CCC to provide classes for students in health sciences. Business management is a very strong and also marketing and sales is a big pathway. We, we actually have a teacher, Tina Martin, who's at Cox Mill High School. She's on the state curriculum writing team for the marketing and sales curriculum. So I was very proud we have somebody that's on that curriculum writing team. And then the other ones that we have is foods and nutrition. We have a very strong program in foods and nutrition. Every high school has that program. Agriculture is at five high schools, automotive is at four high schools. And then every school has an architecture, construction pathway somewhere in their program. And the one at the bottom is the Electrical Trades Program will be opening up at Mount Pleasant this fall.
What about the public safety?
For Mount Pleasant?
At Concord?
At Concord. Yes, we do have public safety at Concord. I didn't put that on the slide, but yeah, we have a very strong public safety program. The, the last piece, and I wanted to end with this, is kind of an overview of some changes with Perkins Five. Usually every year I have to submit an application for funding annually. But now that has been changed to where we do the needs assessment and also the application every two years. So it can be updated annually, but the requirement is every two years. Also, the change that I didn't include on the slide, but Amy alluded to it when she presented, is that now Career and Technical Education applications go through CCIP. So in the past, it was a separate application process where I could provide all of you a link and you just go look at the application. But now it's part of CCIP, so it's, it's a different feel to it. So it actually is included in that same federal website that Title I, that they all use. And that is a really big overview for Career and Technical Education. I'll be answering any questions if you have some.
Okay, board members, opportunity to ask questions. Mr. Parker?
Yes, so Rob, I was in looking at Rusty's documents. It seemed like we didn't have the whole application. But yet, the federal government requires the board to approve this information?
Yeah, we, we, up until this year, we actually could send the link out and show you the application. I think I've done that every year when I presented to all of you. But this year, for some reason, it's in an application that is not external. It's a different process. And so I've tried to, the assurances page that's part of the link on your board docs, that is a printout that I had from the, from the application that I included. But I can do similar to what Amy said, that we can copy, paste, and create a document that can be given.
Yeah, so Dr. Louder, can you possibly ask some of your peers? Because if we're required to approve, but we can't see it on either of these applications, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
Yes, just like I said, that's the way that everybody submits now. So, you know, I can, again, there is no other way to submit that. So I don't think that they're piecemealing that out and going through the whole application. I mean, it's not, you can't do it that way now since it's all been moved.
Well, I get it then.
And piecemeal that to the extent that we can.
I guess, I get it that it's in a tool, but maybe other districts know some trick or some way on how they're giving it to their board to approve?
Well, I know Dr. Hill just said that she would be glad to schedule a time each board member can come in and go through the CCIP application if you want to do that. Because again, I'm not sure there is another way to do it except to piecemeal it out like they offered to do earlier.
So it doesn't create a PDF for us to, for you to have a record of what you put in there?
That's right.
Well, what do you keep as your record of what you submitted? Is it just, it's in an archival and you can see it every year?
Usually what I do for our application, and the, the one for this year, I print out every page into a PDF and I keep it in a file. I keep it electronically, but I have to print it out. And so that, with this one too, I would have to do the same thing. But just the only difference is in the past for CTE, I know it's different from Title I and other departments where they actually have used CCIP for a while. For us, this is a challenge because we've, now I don't have a way of just sharing it. We just, I have to print the PDF and do it that way.
But these are government programs, so there's gotta be a way for the public to be able to access them.
Yeah, and, and right now, I'm sure every CT director on the state is kind of asking the same question. So, and I'm in the same boat with Amy. I don't have a, a way to share it.
If you've got to copy and paste and make a PDF, you gotta do that, but there ought to be better way.
Yeah, and this has nothing to do with not trusting staff, but I think we as board members have a duty to be informed and know what we're approving.
Ms. Furtinbaugh, I hear your concern and I'll figure out a way to get that to you if it means that we have to schedule a two-by-two to come in and take a look. Or I can also check to see if there's another way to get that information. But I will make sure that I get it for you.
Thank you. And I'll say, one option is if you do a WebEx or something similar and give us control for that short period of time so we can scroll down or whatever it hit next or whatever it requires. So, and I have one other question for Mr. Parker.
Yes, ma'am.
So in the assurances page, it mentions the Business Advisory Council. Can you tell us a little bit about how often that group meets? And, and you can just email us later with what, who, who is a member of that now, what the composition is?
Sure. We actually meet, this year we met three times. We've been discussing having quarterly meetings and changing the structure of the meetings to where we meet quarterly. Our next scheduled meeting date is June 25th. So that, that was the time when we actually elect officers for the new year. We talk about meeting dates during that time. But that, that's the structure of it. We meet quarterly. Right now, Barbie Jones, who is the executive director at the Chamber, she's our board chair. And then Jamie Newman from the Health Alliance, she's the vice chair.
Okay, if you could just send us that list, you don't have to run through it now.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Who made, who makes up that, or that board? How do, I mean?
He's gonna send, he's gonna send us the list, Carolyn.
Oh, okay, okay.
I just want to interject here and remind the board that you all appointed that board and voted on it. And so there are very specific guidelines in terms of who had to serve on that board and then how folks rolled off after that. But you all appointed the members of that board, so I'll be happy to send that to you in an email.
Has there been any changes, Crystal, since we've, we made that appointment?
I can address that, Crystal.
Go ahead.
Yeah, actually, there have not been any changes to the board until this month, actually. We've had two members that said they could not be on it next year, so they wanted to rotate off. The only other member that rotated off was Diane Snyder from the Cabarrus College of Health Sciences. And that's just because she retired and Meg Paget, the provost there, took her position. So.
So we don't have to, we don't have to do that?
No, but actually, the board itself, they appoint theirs now. Once it's up and running, they request somebody else to come on and fill their spot.
Okay, so then an update on the names would be, would be a good thing.
Okay.
Laura, do you have any questions on this one? Laura, you still on?
Hey, Rob.
Laura?
Rob, Dane has requested that you do a roll call again. He believes a couple more board members may have dropped accidentally.
Okay, we'll do that right after this, this, this item. It'll be on action again. Barry, did you have any comments?
No comments. I listened to what all Rusty said and I do remember that I was supporting that board. And my, my thought was is that that board would go into its own rotation and be fulfill itself and sustain itself after we did the initial appointment to it.
David?
No questions. Thank you, Rusty and Crystal.
And then Holly, I don't know if Holly's still back on?
Can you hear me?
Yes, you are back on.
Okay, I got, I had to dial in. I don't know what happened, but I got kicked off like numerous times. I, I'm not sure what's going on. I could get on anything else in my office, but I could not get on this meeting. I don't know what the deal is, but I just dialed back in, so I've just now rejoined the conversation.
Okay, well, it's gonna be on action for next week. We're gonna have some more information. So we will be talking about it again, but if you had any questions that.
That's fine. So Dane was texting me and said that y'all had some other issues. Did others have issues with either being kicked off or?
We're not sure Laura's, if Laura's on yet. We're gonna do a roll call in a little bit.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I just had a, I think last year, I remember you talking about a four-year plan. What happened to that? What happens to that with this change?
A four-year plan? It's a different application. It's funny, it's, the whole application process changed. So a lot of the plans that we had already put in place, I just had to reword them for the application. So a lot of those plans are still going on. It's just they will look different in the application. We, we were forced to do a comprehensive needs assessment and then everything's based on that. So really, we are starting fresh with a brand-new Perkins legislation going forward.
But it's not a four-year plan anymore. It's a two-year plan?
It's a two-year plan, yes, sir.
Besides the Aviation Academy, what do we have going on at the new high school, West Cabarrus?
We will be opening up a logistics program and a lot of people have struggled to find out what logistics is. So it's, logistics is really to do with transportation and distribution of products and services. So it's a, we have a curriculum that's created by the, MHI is the name of the company. Materials Handling Industry, they're actually in Charlotte, but they're an international association for the materials handling group. But that's the big thing is coming is logistics. So students will get to leave with a credential that's based on logistics. And then our goal is to also have them ready when they graduate to have a forklift certification. OSHA provides a forklift certification and to have them leave with that, that in hand would be a great deal. A great, a great thing to have.
And I love that idea because logistics right now is a huge challenge for every grocery store, for Amazon, and anybody else that does a major distribution replenishment type business.
We're seeing it firsthand right now, aren't we?
Exactly.
Did you have enough students already signed up for that or how's that?
We actually did. We had two sections available, but we won't be able to employ a full-time teacher. The goal is to hire an adjunct teacher to come in. You know, in CTE now, we have the ability to hire adjunct positions. So our goal is to find a person that's, I've already been in contact with Rowan Cabarrus Community College and talking about it, but the, the person to come in and teach first period both semesters and it'll probably be about 10 hours a week, a part-time teaching position to come in and teach it. Next year, we hope to have a full-time teacher.
And Rusty, just for something to think about. So you've got the Technology Program at Cox Mill High School
You do.
and various STEM things. There is an awful lot of technology involved with logistics, both inside the distribution center and just literally from remote, you know, activities that occur. So, again, just something for the future to think about. I was involved in, we call it supply chain logistics in my recently-retired career. And it's a very fascinating process and more and more distribution centers are going robotic. So I think there's an opportunity possibly to tie in a lot of our programs.
There are, and I'm glad you've mentioned that because that's actually the way I've been thinking about it. It is, it ties in very well to advanced manufacturing at Jam Robinson. It fits a lot of transportation that we already have with automotive. It is a very good partner. It's a very good partner program. And too, my background's UPS, so I like to, my friends laugh at me because they think I'm trying to put a UPS facility at West Cabarrus, but I promise I'm not. I dislike logistics. I need to pull my friends in, see if they'll help me.
And internships, right?
There you go. That's what I was thinking. Exactly.
All right, two other things real quick. We've heard some changes are happening at Hickory Ridge and Mount Pleasant. Can you review those real quick?
Mount Pleasant has the Electrical Trades Program starting up. So I've already been in touch with a teacher and some people in the Electrical Trades Community try to find, again, an adjunct teacher for them because they only had two sections to make the program. So what it's gonna take is, we don't have anyone in the district that's a licensed electrician that could go in and teach first period every day. So I've been in touch with some people in the community that, that are interested. So we'll have, again, same thing as West, it'll be first period. The schedule's already made out, so it's two full sections. I think there's about 40 kids that have already registered to be in the program.
Great.
We had some really good interest in Mount Pleasant. At Hickory Ridge, we've talked a little bit about what to do with their academy and their hospitality program. But really, what I'm doing with hospitality is looking district-wide. What can we do district-wide with hospitality? It's funny, we have kids that want hospitality tourism programs at Concord, at Cox Mill. I mean, it's, it's around the district. So I've really been challenged with how to make that a district-wide program, not just focused on one building. Because I don't know how to, we've had so many kids interested. And we've been looking at enrollment and just allotments and how to make that happen for multiple people, multiple schools.
So we're still having something in Hickory Ridge? Are we changing?
Oh, yeah. They still, they still teach hospitality and tourism. They still do that program over there. Yes, sir.
Okay. And then how many students do we have in CTE right now? Do you have that number?
Oh, in CTE, it's, I think the last count was 12,000 students and that's unduplicated. It's 12,000 and not quite 13,000 students. Duplicated count, I think, was somewhere around 19,000.
So that's a lot, a lot of work you all do. I appreciate it very much. Anything else for Mr. Parker? Okay, thank you. We're gonna, again, have that on action. You're gonna send us the board some more information on that.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you very much. We've been asked to do a roll call to see if we lost anybody. So we'll go through this again. Carolyn, are you still online?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Cindy, are you still online?
Yes.
Okay, Laura, are you online? It indicates she is connected.
I have texted Laura and I have not heard back from her just yet, so I do not know her status.
Okay, well, if you can let us, see if we can get her back on so she could interact with us. David, are you online?
Present.
Barry, are you online?
I am here.
And then Holly, are you, you, you online?
I am here. Can you hear me?
I can. You just can't see the material. You just, you can just hear right now. Is that right?
Oh, I can't see anything.
Okay, so you're just listening online. So we'll just have to keep that in mind when we. So we'll just have to keep that in mind when we're... If there's more presentations to explain that. Okay, so we are without Laura at the moment. So we will move on to our next item, which is 5.03. And Mr. Parker, you're still on, I guess. MOU for EMS training.
Yeah, this is my round two. Dane, you're going to share it again? There you go. What we've got on the screen is the MOU between our school system and the Cabarrus County EMS. And this is very similar to the MOU that we have with the Cabarrus College Health Sciences and also with Rowan Cabarrus Community College, when we share services. And the main reason that we're updating this tonight is because of the internship piece. This document, I think, was put together in 2013. It was updated again in 2015, but the last iteration did not mention internships. So the document, we've updated it to include internships. Anywhere it talks about clinical experiences, we also insert the words internship. So on the first page, I'll skim through some of the changes if you want to follow along. On the first page, it talks about the date in paragraph two. We changed that to make sure that it says effective June 30th of 2020. So it goes into effect next month, or this month. It's already June 1st. In the mutual responsibilities on page one, it talks about the only students have completed a CPR and first-day training will be allowed to be in a clinical rotation. We also included internships in that because we know no student should be in an internship unless they've had CPR and first-day training. And then there's a bullet in the mutual responsibilities that talks about insurance and the liability for students. And just an FYI for all of you, CTE provides an insurance policy for all students that are involved in a work-based learning opportunity. So we already have that part covered. We just needed to insert it in the document. On page two, under Cabarrus County Schools EMS Program Responsibilities, we inserted a bullet, and I think it's about the fifth bullet down, that says CCS will complete the CCS Work-Based Learning Orientation Packet with all required signatures, including student information and instructor contact information. That is actually a process that we already follow in CTE for all work-based learning, but it had not been inserted into this document. So we wanted to make sure that every student fills out the orientation packet because it includes contact with the parent, contact with their supervisor at work, and what their training plan looks like. So it's pretty detailed. Couple bullets down, we inserted internships. And then at the bottom of that page two, Cabarrus County Responsibilities, the first bullet, the last sentence was inserted. It says internship hours may be flexible depending on the student's schedule and opportunities for placement. That is a request that the county be flexible in the time that a student is doing their internship. Again, it may rely on the schedule that they have for that semester. So we just need to insert something in there to say that they need to be flexible with the hours and how we make that available to a student. The fourth bullet down was actually inserted because it's a DPI requirement. It says Cabarrus County shall provide internship opportunities to students that meet schedules and follow the DPI requirements of 135 hours. Every internship, for it to receive a full credit, it has to be 135 hours as a minimum. Some of that can be for reflection time, but a majority of it needs to be time with the company working. That was inserted just because it's a DPI requirement. Page three, under Student Responsibilities, it says for students participating in an internship, they just need to follow the orientation packet, which was mentioned under the other guideline. And then the bullets at the bottom, it says complete portions of the Work-Based Learning Orientation Manual, which we talked about. And then the next bullet says, under normal circumstances, Cabarrus County EMS will provide all necessary PPE for students and interns, which is personal protective equipment. The county actually requested that that be added because of the COVID situation that we're in right now. Because if we had been in a situation right now where they could not provide that, would they needed a way to say that this is how it would be handled? Right now, that was actually placed in there just specifically because of the COVID situation we're in. The last sentence says, under special or unusual circumstances, such as a shortage or pandemic, the students and interns may be required to supply their own personal protective equipment. Under general provisions, there was two changes. The first bullet says the date that it will expire is June 30th, but if there are no changes, then it will just continue. That way, we don't have to redo this every year. It just continues unless there is actually a change. And then the second bullet says either party may suspend this agreement temporarily or at any time for extraordinary circumstances such as health and safety. And again, that was actually a response to the COVID pandemic. The second from the last bullet, we just inserted 2005 as a date, and I think that's all the changes that we had.
Is there any notification parts to this document? Who notify, or who to contact within questions or issues with it?
I don't think that's included in the document. There's not a name or a phone number on here.
Or even a department. Because I don't think they need to be contacting the board chair if they got a question about it.
No, they'll contact the CT director, so let me see how we find that. I think Brian Shaw's on here, so Brian, we worked on this together. Is there a place I could... I guess I could insert my name or assert who they contact for questions?
Yeah, this is Brian Shaw. We basically just worked on the template that's been in existence for a number of years and didn't try to rework it a lot. In contrast to some other MOUs we see that do have, if noticed, do be provided here, here's the person. I think... Let me see. I've got my own copy here. I might be able to find it easier. And we could add a provision to that.
The departments that administer this agreement.
Right. I think we could do that and bring it back. Add that to next week when we have it for action. And each party, you know, mutual responsibilities, each party shall identify a contact person or liaison, or the liaison persons are as follows.
Yeah, that's fine.
Hey, Brian, the third bullet on the front page, on the first page, if you see the third bullet, it says both parties shall appoint a representative. And...
Well, then that's pretty good, then.
Is that good?
Yeah, she'll be the EMS liaison. CC is Cabarrus County, and CCS is us. EMT Training Program Coordinator. Does that work, Rusty?
Yeah, and I was actually going to... That almost makes it sound like the teacher, but it shouldn't be. It should be the CTE coordinator for my department, so we can change the title.
Yes.
All right, just work on that and have it back to us for next fraction next week.
Thank you very much.
Questions or comments from our board?
It looks good.
No, it looks good to me.
Great. David?
Thank you for your work.
Holly, I know you can't see it, but anything pop in your head?
No, actually, everything was covered. All the questions, I'm good.
Okay, Carolyn?
Okay, with me.
And Laura, you back? Okay, still no Laura. Okay, thank you, Rusty.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to 5.04, which is the 2020-21 Academic Fees List. Mr. Alred?
Again, Dane, yeah, thank you. Can you go and put that up? So each year, we come to you with the fees referenced by Policy 4600, which essentially says the board approves fees annually in that we do all our best to keep fees to a minimum for all of our students. You'll notice that we're proposing an elimination, and Dane, if you could scroll down. So you see the highlighted section, yeah? So each year, I just highlight the changes that we made to make it a little easier to keep track from year to year. So you'll see we're proposing the elimination of those technology fees. Dane, if you'll scroll back to the top, and increasing the student fee to $20, so up $10, and renaming it to an instructional technology fee. That would provide consistency across the district and help us to maintain a funding source to protect and repair devices. And Dane, could you go to the next page? Thanks to Kelly Klutz. I give her thanks every single year. She recommended I do this a number of years ago. So this provides you a year-by-year crosswalk, so you can see where new fees come on board, old fees go away, changes year to year, and then a change in fees over time. So both of those documents kind of give you a reference point. And you can see, other than the technology fee, there's no changes to fees this year. And I believe, Cindy, last year, you made a recommendation to separate out our non-academic fees from academic fees. So those are listed at the bottom of both of those pages.
Yeah, because those are personal choice, except for the graduation, but...
Yes, and I can take any questions.
Board members' questions for Mr. Alred?
So this... Okay, Carolyn.
Excuse me. Well, move it on up again, because it looked like, is STEM going from 25 to 50? Is that correct, from what I saw?
You are looking at the crosswalk? What are you looking at?
Going up, 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 up.
Page two, the crosswalk.
Yeah, the crosswalk one.
It went down last year, and it's down more.
Reading it the opposite way from right, you read it from right to left, right?
Oh, was it... Did it go from right to left, then?
Yes.
Yeah, the most recent one is closest.
Oh, okay. So the closest one, so it went down then from 50 to 25? Okay, because that's what I was... Okay, so it went from 50 to 25? Okay, so it went... Then what is it going to, zero?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, all right, so we're going that way, and we're going this way. All right, so it was 50, and we went the other way. Okay, never mind, never mind.
So the instructional fees stayed at the school, which was motivation to try to collect them where there were gaps. Will this technology fee stay at the school as well?
I'm going to ask Kelly and or Crystal if you can kind of chime in here, if you can kind of give me a hand. As far as I know, the trees of the fee will not change how the fee is used from a school-to-school basis.
I can chime in on that. What we were trying to do is because we're, you know, going to hand out devices, is ultimately, you know, they already paid instructional fees. Just say, well, let's do a $10 fee for a device, and then $10 of that, half of that, will essentially go to technology for repairs, and then the other 10 would stay there at the school. We just thought that was an easy way to do it since we're going to hand out 34,000 devices.
So why don't we separate it to a device fee and an instructional fee, because they're two different things?
Because we don't want to take up twice, you know? In other words, like, teachers are doing all this. We're just going to say it's a supply fee. It is an instructional fee. It's what it takes to have instruction now is essentially a device. And we just thought, that's now a $10 fee. It's been that for 20 years, or I don't know exactly, but for a long time. So we just said, why don't we just add 10 to it and use that to fix devices? Now, that's certainly up for, if you guys want to do it a different way, we can, but we thought that was the simplest and the easiest way to do it.
Yeah, I think it's better to not have as many itemizations, and dropping those off at the bottom of page one helps remove some of the pieces. But I wanted to clarify, with whatever agreement the parents will sign, or the guardians will sign with the device distribution, which is still being developed, there will still be some consequence, I'll call it, for damage and loss of the device and whatnot. Is that true?
Yeah, I mean, that's the intent, that, you know, the honest truth is, you know, these are, all these fees, these are things that schools have to deal with all the time, and they have to handle situations when people can't pay. And but the expectation is that, yes, you know, the regular student's going to pay the $20, and part of that, the $10, is kind of there in case there's a problem. And then, yeah, they're responsible for the device, just like they are for a PE uniform or an ROTC uniform or a baseball uniform. I mean, it's all the stuff that takes to have school.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we have a clarification that the $10 doesn't basically buy a device that doesn't have to be returned. That's only for wear and tear, replacing the charging cord if it's not. And that's, that actually may be on the form itself for accepting the device.
Yeah, and that's something we'll try to, and try to, and need to clarify with people. Like you said, it certainly doesn't buy it. It's there for wear and tear. And yes, the expectation be you replace it if you destroy, you know, a $300 computer or whatever.
Yeah.
Further comments from our board members? Holly? Did you understand what the fee changes are?
Yes. No, I followed it, and the changes I thought were good. No, I'm good. I followed it.
Okay, David or Barry?
I'm good.
Okay, Laura, did you come back on? Okay, I would like to see them separated since they're two different things, my preference, but... And the other question I usually have, and I throw it out there every year, is why aren't all the fees on here for us to take a look at? The extracurricular fees?
But that's each school, Rob. We've gone through that many times.
It's not each school. I think it's the board should be able to make sure that we're consistent across schools in the fees that are charged to students to take advantage of extracurricular activities. So anyway, that's...
Rob, you bring up a good point, but I mean, I understand that as well, but it is different at each school because they don't offer the same program. So how would we do that? I mean, I'm not, I'm saying that that probably is a good idea for us to have the knowledge, but I'm not sure without getting it from...
I mean, if it's a band fee or a tennis fee or a robotics fee or whatever they are. I mean, those are things that students and families are expected to pay, and it should be listed, and the board should have an opportunity to see what those are.
Well, and I'm okay with that. I agree 100%, but I mean, I think there are things that are, you know, school-specific, school-related.
You can make a note. X, Y, and Z fees are school-specific.
But I don't think the board has to approve.
If it's a fee that's charged to somebody, I think we should be approving them, or at least reviewing them. Do you want to bring up the policy?
Yeah, I think the list would more than double in size.
It's quite all right. At least we know what the fees are. We don't need to be hiding anything.
Well, we're not. People elect to do a sport, or band, or cheerleading, or robotics, extracurricular.
Yeah, and they like to get a yearbook and other fees too, so...
Yeah, and I think there's probably, at some point, all of those extracurricular coaches, teachers, whatever title they have, they don't know yet what those fees are that far ahead of time. So but they know them by the time that activity starts.
Well, it's, again, it's a fee that we ought to have an opportunity to look at and make sure that we're, everyone's treated consistently. Anyway, anything else on this? Since Laura's not here, we'll see it again next week. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, trying to get four items left on our agenda here. We've got, the next one is 5.05, School Resource Officer Program Contract, and this time it's with the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department. Brian Schultz and Kelly Klutz, are you guys back on, still online?
Yes, thank you, and good evening once again. So this one, this is very similar to what we brought to you a month ago in the board work session. This is the School Resource Officer Program Memorandum of Understanding. Last month, we worked with the Concord Police Department and the city to be able to execute that one. And again, just to recap, and very similar here with the Sheriff's Department, we combined what was once a separate memorandum of understanding with the contract slash financials. So those are once separate documents. And I think the other kind of confusing thing possibly in all this is that, once upon a time, the MOU portion of it, once upon a time being last year, the MOU portion of it was actually a combined agency document. So it was the combined Sheriff's Department along with the City of Concord. So essentially, they were... So essentially, they were separated, and then, and then combined with the financials. So the city of Concord has their own MOU slash financial document, which you approved about three weeks ago, and then, and now, what we have before you is the combined memorandum of understanding and financials for the sheriff's department. The major difference between the two is really the, the term. So the city of Concord was, is for two years, and then the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department agreed to do, to extend this one through 2025, and then will renew every four years on the election cycle thereafter. So this will go from 2020 to 2025, and then every four years thereafter. So I think, you know, again, very similar, the documents are very similar, and this lays out the, the duties of the county, the expectations of the SROs, and then the, the financial piece. So it is a, about a 15-page document, and again, I would, you know, ask if you have any questions or concerns regarding this memorandum of understanding slash contract with the sheriff's department regarding our School Resource Officer Program.
So this does go over the funding for that as well?
It starts on about page seven, I believe.
Does it match up with the city of Concord, or are the rates, are they different?
No, the, this is Kelly, the rates are significantly better with the county. The county has been really great to us, and for the high school SROs, they only charge us what the state allot and pushes down into our, our funding stream. It's significantly less than what it costs for an officer, so we're getting a great deal there. And in addition, for the elementary SROs, they only bill us for the amount that the grant that the state allotted us for the grant. And that amount has not increased over the years, and the county has not increased their rate either. So really, they just bill us for what the, the state pushes down to us.
And the city, the city however, gives us some officers for, for the middle schools, is that right?
It's true, both the city and the county both do. So our middle school officers, we do not pay, those are in kind from both the county and the city.
Is that out, is that spelled out here too? In this?
It is.
Yeah, there it is, sorry.
It's on pitch now.
Yeah, I see, I see. All right, questions, comments from the board that you need information for next week?
I just had a question, are ATL and Mary Frances Wall the only schools that are paired? Kelly?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought Brian would be them.
Oh, maybe Brian now, sorry.
That's correct, they are.
Okay. Do, do we need to, at some point, request a separate one, because ATL and size?
I can inquire about that, to see what Lieutenant Andrews says about that.
Okay.
And then Hickory Ridge Elementary is on there, they just haven't assigned anybody yet?
That's accurate, they're in the, the hiring process of that right now, and they, you know, talked to Lieutenant Andrews as recent as about, as early last week, and they are in the process, and are very, very close to being able to announce both names, actually.
Great. Okay, David or Barry, have you, you guys have anything on this one?
No questions.
No questions, it's good, thanks.
Okay, Holly?
No, no, no questions, Rob, no questions.
And Laura, did you join us again, or are you still? Nothing from Laura, Carolyn?
Good with me.
Okay. Again, since we don't have Laura, I guess we'll, all right, try again next week.
Two, two of us texted Laura, and she's not responding, so.
Hopefully everything's okay, it still shows she's connected.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. What do we got next? We got 5.06, which is Dell and Apple replacement cycle lease purchases, Mr. Hughes.
Yes, and if I could, Mr. Walter, just mentions.
Go ahead.
Thank you, that, this, the lease that's before you today, the two leases are aligned with the funding that we get every year. So this is not new funding, this is just rollover from where we had a three or four-year lease roll off, and we're just reusing those same funds. So this is not related to new funds or the new school, this is continuing funds. And Dane, I'll let you take over now.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Good evening, board. What you have before you tonight are our Apple and Dell leases for replacement cycle. Last year was my first year dealing with the lease, and we spent the majority of that lease on staff replacement devices in the areas, in the departments and stuff. And so this year, we're concentrating on student devices to be replaced. So you'll see, each one of these is heavily weighted towards that. 30 OptiPlexes will replace some desktops around the district that need to be replaced, and 1,765 Chromebooks will go to help meet some of our growth initiatives, and to help meet some of our replacement cycle that we're anticipating coming in from the devices that went out this spring that can't be repaired, and then any overages, we'll go to start replacing the Gen 2 Chromebooks that are going to be phased out over the next year and a half by Google. Is there any questions on the Dell lease?
Yeah, Rob, I have a question for Dane.
Go ahead, please.
So, on the Chromebooks, some will need to be retired just because of age. What do you expect? I know it would only be a rough estimate. What do you expect is our net gain? Because you know I'm worried about the condition of what we get returned.
Agree, I'm, we don't know that net gain just yet. I would have to go back and pull our growth numbers to see which ones will be taken up with that right off the bat, and then, what we would use to repair then, and then, you know, just replacing and phasing those out. The good thing is, is the devices we're seeing coming in so far have not been beyond repair, so we could keep the Generation 2s and get them repaired over time, and get them back in service, and have them ready for August, if worst come to worst. So I think we're going to be okay with our number of devices for August 1st.
Because I, I look at it from the standpoint of, you had to, just for the ones that were distributed, and that was only a portion of the district.
Yes.
It was 15,000, we have 34,000 kids. So you had to borrow from schools, because a single school didn't have enough, in some cases, for everybody who needed one from that school. So I like to use the phrase, to make all the schools whole again, so they are at least back to what their inventory was previously, not counting the fact that our inventories, when we think about one-on-one, count, in IT, we call them boat anchors. They count all the old desktop devices that may still be in, in rooms for classroom use, but they can't be taken home. So when we talk about working towards a full distribution of devices, I'm very concerned that we don't have enough devices to send out, to send home with every child.
I just mentioned that there is some dollars that are allocated specifically in the CARES Act, and we have no choice but to spend them on, on devices. There's two different allotments, one is for devices for students, and one is devices for staff. Now, the board, the state board is voting on that policy Wednesday, well, Thursday, so Wednesday it's reviewed, and Thursday they'll vote, and we do not have our individual allotments yet, but there is dollars, and there's, there's not anything else you can spend those dollars on. So that will definitely help. And as we received some dollars from the state at the initial phase of the COVID, called PRC 154, the state pretty much gave us flexibility to spend those dollars on COVID-related items. We did go ahead and make a purchase of some, some machines, I think, a couple hundred thousand dollars there. So we did increase our inventory and preparation for this, and we will also do that once these funds are allotted next week.
And Cindy, if I could also address that, we're moving away from the cart per room model, and going more to the one-to-one model. So schools have more devices than they have students in most cases, unless there was, you know, the elementary schools are the only place that's not true. So I think overall, you know, if we stick with K, with 3 through 12 to send out devices, we should have enough to cover those students, and, you know, still be okay, and have enough spares in-house to be able to.
But Dane, you know, Dane, you know from the device meeting that Carolyn and I were on this afternoon with you, that there was concern, me included, and many staff members, who said, we cannot ignore K to 2 with the devices. So I really, really think we need to be rethinking that. I mean, we had folks from the school speak up and said, every second grader at their school uses a Chromebook every day. In most cases, K1 and 2 are all using devices every day. So maybe not to the extent of a high school student, but they're all using devices.
And that's true, and they, each one of those K1 cart, or K1 classrooms, has a Chromebook, has an iPad cart in it, and then our second graders use Chromebooks. So those, those are not changing, we're not changing anything at that level, the same amount of devices they had available in their classroom is not changing.
When we talk distribution, they need, the second graders, if they're all using Chromebooks, they all need to be counted in those totals. So maybe what Kelly's saying, there is enough money, but I want to see K to 12 included in written, written down, that we're going to include them in devices.
I think they should be addressed in our committee, because that, you know, we were given the plan of 3 through 12, so we could definitely look into that, yes, yes.
Well, certainly, and, and obviously, Dr. Lauter and, and folks need to be involved, but I just don't see how we can leave them out, when we have, are mandated to have digital learning days, and we have not accounted for all 13 grades.
So I'll just say, the committee's working on that, you know, like, to, for example, to give a kindergartner a, you know, let's say that this, I have a kindergartner on the first day of school, Chromebook, probably not something we would do. So Crystal and her group are trying to figure out how they may do some of that remotely, like they did with packages, and somewhere in the middle of the year or later on, you may move to first graders or second graders. There are a lot of second graders, for example, that are using Chromebooks, but that wouldn't necessarily be the model that we're going to start out with. So I think what they want to do is, or what we want to do is go 312, and then start figuring out how you may do that gradually. But the team has met a couple times, and feels like with this COVID money, that we definitely have more than enough machines, including enough to, to do repairs if they come back. But again, it wouldn't necessarily be on the first day of school. So that's all stuff that they're going to work on, or you guys are going to work on. But again, with that COVID money, we feel good that, that we're able to do it. And I think Dane, what Dane was talking about was, when you have this classroom sets of computers, which we have done, what happens is you have to put 30 computers in, in for each period, because in first period, I might have 30 kids, but in second period, I really only have 22 kids. And so there's a time when, when a portion of those devices are never being used. And so when you actually allocate those out per student, the numbers are pretty good. And so, again, they're, they've got to do all that and work on a plan, but we feel, we feel good about what we're looking at right now.
Okay, and that's encouraging. I would just like us to start using that phrasing such as, we will be distributing devices to 3 to 12 immediately for the start of the school year, and by the end of first semester, or whatever the wording is, we will have devices distributed to K to 2.
Again, that's all stuff the committee's going to work on, because one of the things that that group I know has talked about, that I hadn't even necessarily thought of, is, you know, you have to, especially the smaller you get, you have to teach kids about computers. So there's a large group of them that can't do that on the first day of school, or even the fourth week of school. It's all about kind of using how you use it, how you take it out. So that's kind of all of the culture of deciding which grade that's going to be. So again, that'll be all of the plan that that group is working on, that we'll have to advertise and roll out by, you know, somewhat by grade level.
I, I understand that, I'm on that committee. I just want the conversation to include all grades who are students at Cabarrus County Schools, even if the plan, you know, with a modified distribution for K to 2, or delayed distribution or something, but just to not ignore.
How about, how about a cost and a number of devices needed for that?
Like I said, I think that, as you said, you're on the committee, that committee's going to roll that out. I think when we're ready to start school, that'll all be in place. So I think, I think we're good.
We can definitely get you cost numbers on what it would take to stretch those devices out to those other grades.
Correct, okay. Any other comments from the rest of the board? Laura, I think you said you were back on? Maybe?
She did text me back and say she was on.
I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Glad to have you back. Can you, anything you've got, any feedback you have on this one?
About the computers, I agree with, with what Cindy was saying, yes, no, absolutely.
All right, so we're going to, if you can get us the cost, number of devices needed to, to do the K2 as well. David, anything?
No, Cindy's correct, we do need to have a comprehensive K to 12 plan with devices.
Okay, Barry?
Yeah, I agree, definitely comprehensive plan. I really want to see the, and I think Dane, you're going to kind of get, go through this with us, is how you're going to collect these devices at the end of the year, and what your process is going to be. I'm more concerned about your whole collection process, and the surge of all these devices coming at you on the last couple of days of school. It's a whole lot different than what you went through when you issued 15,000 over a week or two period. I don't know what your plan is for bringing them all back in really fast.
I can address that now, or offline if you like.
Now, does the board want to hear that?
I think, I mean, I think it's a little bit different for each school, because they started picking up already, or dropping off already this week, right?
Yes.
Maybe we could just get it written?
Yeah, I mean, you can update me on a, on a weekend, a week, I just wanted to know, I'd said something to Chris last week at the agenda meeting, that just wanted to understand the process, because the, you know, the surge, and trying to track who, who returned what, and then what happens when you get to the end, and you're missing a percentage of the devices that, you know, because they just neglectfully didn't come and turn them in? And how are we going to address that?
Agreed. Will do, will.
Yeah, we'll have Dane, Dane, you can just send out and kind of send that to the board, right, what the process is, are you good with that?
Oh, certainly, we sent that out to the ITFs and the principals, I can send you what we put out to them, be glad to.
That's, that's good, I just, I just want to understand your thinking.
Sure, be glad to. Do y'all want to move on to the Apple lease, or?
All right, Carolyn, did you get any opportunity to provide, ask any question?
Oh, I'm good, because I was in the meeting and heard most all this other stuff, so I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay, well, yeah, go quickly over the Apple lease, and we'll see if we can put it on consent for you.
Excellent, the Apple lease is solely iPads. We have a lot of old first-generation iPads out there that can't be managed, so we're phasing those out, so that, that we get ones that have enough storage to hold the apps that they need for. that have enough storage to hold the apps that they need for coursework. And also they can be managed via Mosul so that we can take advantage of those tools to be able to manage them better and then the carts that go with that. And for the first time since recent history, from what I've heard, Apple is going to come and help us put these together and provide those services at no charge.
Whoa, that's nice savings.
We're working on Dell next.
You can flaunt that Apple thing.
So again, these are replacements of existing devices or in addition to?
Yeah, it'll come, it'll cover some growth in the schools that have growth. Since we have schools that are, you know, changing enrollments, we'll try to hand that around with attrition, but then these will also be used to handle some of that growth that can't be handled with attrition. And then they'll go to replacement cycle at the schools that need it worst.
Okay. And Kelly, Kelly says it's the same amount of money that we had last year.
Hey, Rob, I just realized, we don't have the Dell quote in here. This is only that older master document. I thought I looked at it and I don't see it in here now.
We don't have the full actual quote. I can have that added probably tomorrow.
Yeah, these are, these are all Dell documents and quotes because, and the reason I went back to look at it, because like I said, I thought I looked at it, but obviously I missed it, is for the, you made a verbal comment, Dane, that the lease is only for the 500 iPads, but there's 500 Mosul licenses and iPad carts. Software can't be leased. It doesn't have, it's not a capital asset. So is it, does it come in one unit? Because if you, if it's an item on an inventory, I wouldn't expect it's a leased item.
So subscription?
Kelly, can you speak to that a little bit? Because we've bought the, we paid for services and software on the lease in the past.
Sorry, I was looking for the unmute button. Yeah, we, we do, Cindy. They, they bundled these together for years and we've, we've always done them this way.
So is it, does the software already come on the device? They just charge a separate line item?
Right. It's just a charge there. We load it on there and it's their management tool. It's kind of like the Windows tool that we manage. It's the Apple equivalent.
Well, I think we haven't had Mosul for that many years, I didn't think.
This is, I think, their third year with it.
Yeah. I mean, it's only been the last couple of years because we didn't have it when I was on the board before.
I think they used JAMP before that.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think the difference, Cindy, is that these machines are, are less than the fixed assets threshold. They are inventoried. We absolutely inventory them, but they're not, they're under the fixed asset threshold.
Yeah, Alex, I'm just surprised that if, that's why I want to see the line item, if the licenses are listed separately, but then these are really purchased to own, right?
They are.
It's not a, it's not a straight lease. It's a purchase to own. So.
Correct.
And we also purchase with the Dells, it's the Google license that comes with it that we have to buy to let the Chromebooks function. So that's part of that as well. So.
It's not itemized.
Um, it, it is on the lease. I'll have those actual quotes out there for you ASAP.
Okay.
I didn't realize those quotes weren't out there. Sorry about that.
I mean, it looks like the Dell one is because I saw a price on the OptiPlex, but the Apple.
It was just the overview. I can give you individual pricing on those. I can give you the actual quotes that go behind there.
Yeah. So the quotes are there for Dell. It doesn't list the software separately.
Right. And you want the full quotes?
No, the, these Dell ones are okay. We just don't have any itemization.
Same thing, same thing you've given us last year.
Yeah. Because I asked for this the last year too. Actually, I asked for it on the two new schools quotes. They're not in there.
Okay. We'll, we'll get those added in.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board on this one?
It has to be action.
Okay.
Action. Yes, absolutely. Because I haven't even got to ask questions, but y'all pretty much covered everything. I wondered where the Apple stuff was. So that's good. Yeah, definitely action.
My apologies, Holly. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. I just didn't want to ask because I was trying to wait till y'all were finished, but I was getting kind of lost in some of everybody's comments. But if we were not covering K12 with devices, how would we have met the mandate for the NTI?
Say that again. I'm not sure if I followed your question.
So if we did not have devices for all grades, and there's no exclusion or exception, I'm assuming for the instructional time, then NTI, how would we have met with that? How was that addressed? I don't know. Somewhere along the line, I missed all that.
I think they were looking at doing packets and offline activities. It's more, I think Crystal's group has a great plan to put together for that.
Yep. Thanks, Dane. This is Crystal. There is no legislative requirement that the remote learning days be digital. We're supposed to plan for online and online activities. The committee that Dr. Lauter has been referencing will have some work with that remote learning plan, but I will be happy to send you all the outline of all of the, I think there's 13 or, 13 or 17 requirements as part of that plan. I'll be happy to send that to you tonight.
Okay. That, that would be very helpful because I was curious about that myself. So actually, that makes more sense. So it did not have to be digital. It just had, we had to meet the guidelines, right? No matter how, what we decided that looked like.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Yeah, it's got to be a whole lot, a whole lot of districts in a worse position than we are.
I'm sure.
Yes.
And Cindy, there's an attachment A1 that's included in the Apple that's got a product description and quantity. Is that what you're looking for?
That's, that's what I've got up on, I've got that up on my screen right now.
Oh, you do? I can't see your screen for some reason. You said A1?
It, it's on page 11 of the Apple attachment, but it doesn't show the unit price. It shows the, how it's broken out.
Let me get down here.
There it's called a subscription.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's not an actual quote. It's just a quantity.
Right. It's just a quantity of what they purchase. So you want to see an actual quote for how much per line item that is?
Yeah, because that's, that's how business is normally conducted. We're buying 500 at a certain price.
Okay. Not a problem.
Okay. Do we get any other questions for, on this item for next week? Do we need for next week? All right. Let's move on to 5.07, which is Curriculum Associates Elementary I-Ready Contract. And Dr. Hill?
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Lauter, tonight I'm bringing the Elementary I-Ready Math Quote. The amount of this quote exceeds the amount that the superintendent or his aides needs can approve. I sent the quote to you on Friday and I did receive some questions. But in order to help everyone understand where we are today with the elementary math and reading resources, I want to go back to 2018 and 19. So in full year 2018 and 19, we used two different resources. For math, we used Dreambox, and for reading, we used I-Ready. Last year, if you'll recall, it was about this time last year, I presented to you a joint quote for both I-Ready Reading and I-Ready Math. The committee had decided they wanted to go with both for our diagnostic and also adaptive instruction for reading and math. However, in June 2019, which was actually the Friday before you all were supposed to vote, that following Monday, there was an announcement made that the K3 Literacy Assessment would be changed. And just, I just want to be clear that I'm not making a statement about the decision that was made on what tool was selected, just the timing was bad. So we decided to wait. We brought that back to you in August. And what we ended up doing is doing iStation math and reading for five schools. So we were going to pilot with iStation. And we actually did a bundle with I-Ready Reading and I-Ready Math for 15 of our schools. So now we get to this year. This year, Ms. Reeves has done a fantastic job with our elementary principals and our elementary teachers, helping them understand the new K3 literacy assessment. And we have made the decision that we are going to stick with iStation for reading. So that will be the tool that we're using for reading. So I'm not bringing that to you tonight. But I said that to help you understand that we are using I-Ready for math. The quote reflects 21 schools instead of 15 last year, and it does not include the reading math bundle discount, because like I said, we're not using it for reading. And it does include the teacher toolbox. Last year, Curriculum Associates provided the I-Ready Math Toolbox for free at no cost. So you can see the quote that is listed there and the amount, but at this time, I would be asking you to approve this resource next week at your business meeting.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Dr. Hill, this is David. When will, when will a similar proposal about iStation be presented?
I will not be presenting iStation because it does not exceed the amount that I can approve. So that contract amount is coming in right around 200,000. So I will not be bringing any other elementary resource to you. And one thing that I did forget to add is I am not requesting any new funding. I am operating 100% in budget as I have the last four years I've been here.
Great. Thank you.
Barry, you have anything?
So Dr. Hill, y'all have used this now, what, three years? Is that correct?
We've used I-Ready Math for one year. It was last year. So in 2018, 19, we used Dreambox for math. Last year, we had a large committee that selected to use I-Ready Math. So we used it this past year. So this will be the second year that we're using I-Ready Math.
So our, our results from last year were not as a result of using the I-Ready Math? Is that correct?
I would say our results from last year are a combined effort, but specifically speaks volumes to our fantastic teachers. I would never say before you or anyone else that any tool is the result of, of our, of our good student performance. It's a result of the hard work and effort of our teachers, our students and families, and the leadership of our principals. I will say that I-Ready Math is a tool that our teachers utilize. We do not purchase textbooks in our district. So the toolbox is a great resource for our teachers. They use that along with the curriculum documents that they develop. So that is their tool for teaching math instruction. We'd much rather than use these tools than to go out on the internet, on Pinterest, and teacher pay teachers to find resources, it's resources that are not research-based. Does that answer your question?
It did. I don't know if you heard, I was saying, what you said was well said, and the teachers do deserve the credit. I mean, we're, we're looking to pay for a tool, and I just wanted to make sure that the tool, now that they are using it, that it's become, they're becoming more and more proficient with using the tool that helps them do their work and focus on the students that really need the extra help. And that's what this software is supposed to do. Is that correct?
Yes. So this tool serves as both a screener and a diagnostic that they give three times a year. It's a little game, if you will, that students get on. But the results of that assessment, that quick assessment allows students, excuse me, teachers to know exactly where their students are and what they need. And then it provides adaptive technology. So depending on how you're performing, how are you responding, the technology is adaptive. So it provides for personalized instruction. And then the toolbox is based on standards. So teachers can use that as they plan their lessons that are aligned to the standard courses study and our CCS curriculum documents.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's all I have, Rob.
Thanks, Barry. David, you had a comment? Just how many years is this quote good for, Dr. Hill?
This is for one year.
Do you, with so much discussion about these tools, is that kind of the best we can get? I mean, should we try to get a two-year or a three-year quote?
That's an excellent question, Mr. Harrison. I would love to bring to this board a two or three-year quote, but that has not been the pleasure of this board in my past experience. So I continue to do a one-year quote and bring that to you every year. But to answer your question, yes, with anything, there is more of a discount when you do a multi-year agreement.
And just personally skittish about what looks good the first year, but which is considerably different the next year, when, in effect, we're invested already by the first year's purchase. I'm just wondering if the price would jump up next year or some year in the future?
That, that's, that's very possible. And that's just the risk that you have to take. But I will say again, that it's not been the pleasure of this board to enter a multi-year agreement for instructional resources. So I've just done a year-by-year agreement and quite frankly, haven't requested a multi-year agreement in the past year or two. I will, like I said, if you're comparing last year's quote, that quote was only for 15 schools. This year, it's for 22 schools. Last year's quote had the teacher toolbox for free. This year, we're being charged for it. They gave it to us for free the first year. And the other thing as well is last year's quote had a reading and math bundle discount. And since we are only using the math product, we do not have that added discount.
I guess in the larger picture, I'd like to make sure we do all we can to have some stability in the tools that we use for this instructional component.
Well, I would definitely say that we do have stability. I had absolutely no control that the state was going to change the K3 literacy assessment last year. I was all set and ready to go, but it did not make sense to purchase a product that the state was going to provide a similar product. I did not think that was a good use of taxpayer dollars, which is why we decided to, we actually, we're actually tried the iStation math. We, five schools wanted to pilot it to see if that would be a better use of taxpayer dollars and perhaps a better tool. It turned out the istation reading, we are going with, but the istation math was not effective. Our teachers did not like it. It was just not as effective as the I-Ready Math. So that's why, that's why we're decided to go with the math and presenting this quote to you this year.
Thank you for your work.
I, I also like the idea of multi-year contracts, but based on what the state did last year, I think we would put that money at risk.
Well, one, one thing that I have done, if you'll recall, I made sure that I included this in our TE21 and Mastery Connect contract three years ago, that if the state came up with a similar product, or I made sure that that language was in the contract. But, but I will say again, I'm not requesting any new funding. This is all within budget. But um, but I will say again, I'm not requesting any new funding. Um, this is all within budget. And this is a tool that the teachers um, have used and are familiar with, and these resources are referenced in our CCS curriculum documents.
Okay, Holly, do you have anything?
So I think this was some of the discussion that we had last year, Crystal, when I was asking about uh, some of these programs, because I wasn't real familiar with it. So I, I guess I also agree, I would love a multi-year contract as well, but with the changes in software and of course, with the education guidelines period, just like what happened, would that be smart? And if we did that, what would happen if things did change and, and it became um, a problem?
Well, for math, it's a little bit different because um, the, the reason why it was an issue for reading is because um, we've always had a K3 literacy assessment in reading. Um, but the tool that the state was using at that time and the tool that we were using were a little bit different. Um, however, when they switched to that reading, that new reading platform, as you notice, it's even a similar name, iStation, i-ready, um, the, the products were very similar. So for math, uh, we wouldn't be running into um, much of a risk, but again, um, I have made sure that the um, language in the multi-year contract reads as though um, if new products became available that were provided by the state, we would be able to get out of the contract. So I just, I just want to be clear, are you all asking me to get a multi-year quote?
Uh, through the budget cycle maybe, but not, not now.
Well, I was actually going to ask the question. So before we go stopping this conversation, I'd like to say what, I mean, a multi-year contract doesn't mean you pay in advance. You would pay in increments. So you wouldn't pay but for one year at a time, but you would be obligated to pay over a, a couple of years, is that correct?
That's right. So the way that the contracts typically read is that um, Kelly and our attorneys do a really good job of providing me with the, the exact language, but it basically, we pay it every year. Um, but there's a clause in there that says that in the event the Bears County Schools goes bankrupt, we're not obligated to pay. Like if the funding is not available, then we wouldn't have to pay.
Well, I get that if it, we went bankrupt, but I was, I was referencing if we chose to do a multi-year contract and we signed up for that. And yes, Barry, that's true, we wouldn't pay it ahead of time, but would it not be that if we changed our mind or something took place, they would back bill us for the um, deduction we got for doing a multi-year if we didn't exercise that?
Well, the only, the only reason why we wouldn't fulfill a multi-year contract is if the state was requiring us to use another tool, which they wouldn't be um, for math, um, or if the state was providing a comparable product um, for less. So again, we can put that in the contract, and then if that were the case, then we would take advantage of it. Um, I do not foresee that happening. DPI is not in the business of providing um, tools. Um, but I don't, I don't foresee that being a, a problem, but we can definitely include that in the agreement.
So you're saying you can get something by next week?
Yes, I can get something by tonight.
Yay!
Well, in that case, how about let's do that for next week?
Uh.
Just for comparison's sake.
Yeah, Carolyn, please, go ahead.
I have a question, just real quick. I, I noticed that on that invoice, which that invoice went away, um, that, that was up there, but it looked like it, it had under other or ta- uh, said shipping or taxes. It, it, there, there, there it is. Uh, it showed 4,009, there, well, it, 3861. Uh, did we get those taxes back, or does the county get those taxes back?
I'll let Ms. Klutz answer that question.
Sales tax.
Well, it said shipping tax or other, and I didn't know how much of that was sales tax.
It's, it's all sales tax, but.
But I didn't know if we got that back.
I can find out for you, Ms. Carpenter.
Okay. It'd be nice. I, I mean, to get it back. The other question is, I know there was a lot of discussion, that Dreambox, did that, did that go where, I mean, are they still using Dreambox, or was that one that was kind of discontinued?
No, ma'am, we stopped using Dreambox last school year.
Well, I know, but wasn't it some question whether they were going to, it was something about Dreambox. It wasn't compatible with something or some, wasn't there something around Dreambox? It wasn't compatible, it didn't do something that some, that i-ready did or some, wasn't there something that it didn't do that i-ready did or something? There was something different about Dreambox. I remember there was some discussion on that last year.
Um, the only discussion that we um, came to an agreement on is that um, the i-ready product was better. Um, it provided um, a diagnostic assessment. Dreambox does not offer that, or I should, I don't know what they offer now. They did not offer that at the time of our review. Um, they did not have um, opportunities for teachers to um, do an assigned focus for, based on the standards. Um, the product was primarily adaptive. Um, so it just, it didn't fit our needs. Um, it provided more personalized instruction, but did not provide an opportunity for um, for teachers to assign standards based on what they were teaching at the time.
Maybe that's, but I knew there was some, because I, I remember talking about, and there was something that uh, the Dreambox couldn't do that i-ready could. And I didn't know if they, then I knew it was something like that. All right, thank you very much.
Yes, you're right. And you were on that committee last year, so yes, that is accurate. Um, I wanted to tell you, um, I just got a message on the, our i-ready rep is listening into this board meeting, and um, she's informed me that the multi-year agreements require payment upfront. So um, that would not be um, an option for, I know that I would not be able to afford that in my budget and would require, I, 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 I would not recommend that.
I, I withdraw my suggestion.
Could we at least find out um, what the possible discount is um, to do a two or three-year?
Yes.
It, it's up to them to waive it if they'd like.
So do they, how do they price this? By, by student, by number of students?
Um, if you'll scroll down a little bit, um, you'll see that it's priced out based on um, the projected enrollment and so.
Numbers that we gave them?
Yes. And so you can see that there's a site license. It's a site license, so it falls within a band. Um, so you can see um, AT Allen has 627 or projected at 627. And so anywhere between 501 and 800 students, um, which is a pretty broad um, number. Um, that's how they um, how they assign that site license.
So it's some tiers, it's not per, per student?
That's right.
And then you have a plan for bringing these new stu- schools that haven't used this program online or up to speed?
Well, they've used i-ready reading in the past, so they're certainly familiar with the um, product. And like I said, um, Sarah Reeves are new, um, well, she's not new anymore, but our elementary director is absolutely amazing, and she makes sure that um, any product that's in the hands of our teachers, um, the teachers know how to use it and use it effectively.
Okay. So Board, what do we want to do here?
I think it has to be action.
Okay.
Yep, definitely action, and she's going to bring, she's going to bring to us at least an idea of what the quotes might look like, so we would at least have an idea of which we're dealing with.
Okay.
And what kind of discount we might get.
We'll see that on action next week. Thank you, Dr. Hill. Um, and our last item for tonight was the uh, Legal Services Contract 5.08. And again, this has to do with we every year do a, an evaluation of our board attorneys. Um, we did that a couple of months ago. We had last, last month, we had a contract addendum for our regular attorney, and then we have, had, did not discuss uh, the contract with our other attorney, um, which is Hartson and Williams. And this is the contract right there, that the existing contract. And I guess the discussion here was, is there any things that we want to change with this? Do we want to see if we can combine uh, both services into one uh, attorney later on or through an RFP process, or what do we want to do here? I know there were some concerns on, on this contract.
So Mr. Walter, the way I read this is we needed to give them any intent to change 60 days. So this has to be, we must look at the legal contracts in March or earlier. We can't keep delaying these every year. Um, because I don't know that, and Mr. Shaw can advise us, but I don't know that we have any recourse here.
If you go to the last page of the contract, it says we have uh, four months essentially to uh, give them notice for any reason whatsoever. So we do have some leverage of that, it's just.
Yeah, but it, it says it automatically renews.
Correct, but at the last page exhibit, whatever that exhibit was.
Yeah, but I think we're in the case here of, it has already automatically renewed, unless we, you know, invoke the four month. I mean, I think the services, it sounds like they, from staff, they've been fine, but there has been a concern about the same firm representing um, uh, people who may be on the other side of a case involving the district. And so we need to have clarification on that point. And I believe, Mr. Walter, you were going to contact them. Did that, did that happen?
I have not. I wanted to talk to the board first on what, what our pleasure was on this contract.
Yeah, I thought we had already talked about that a month ago, that, that was going to happen.
So, Rob, can I ask a general question?
Yes.
This contract originally was dated 2018, and uh, Hartson and Williams is uh, fine with remaining with the either 175 an hour or 250 an hour um, rates.
If there are no changes, that would be yes. I don't know, I don't know if it's addressed to.
Third year in a row. Um, I, I, I don't, I don't know the going rate of attorneys, um, but, but I'm wondering why it's the same rate.
Because it just keeps going for five years, I think is what it says, right?
So it renews for one year, another one-year term?
Yeah, it, it is technically already renewed.
Unless we want to cha- unless we want to change it, or unless we want to combine attorneys. You know, it's up to the board series.
We had some very good reasons for separating out uh, property legal questions and land purchase legal questions uh, to a separate attorney.
We did at the time. That was several years ago.
And what seems to be the problem now, because one of the reasons we did it, because our current attorney is up in Raleigh, and we needed somebody locally here to file papers.
I think that's exactly what you were saying. I think that's exactly the reason we, we uh, split it off.
We, we said the deeds were filed in this county, so the uh, li- li- literally, literally, the legwork needed to be done in this county.
And it makes sense. I mean, to me, that, that's, and I don't know what the problem is. Uh, and I wish somebody would let me know what the problem is.
I, I can speak to that. What we have had problems with is we are paying a law firm, and then when we have cases, um, the same law firm uh, represents people who are, we are um, going up against in court, and we consider that a conflict of interest. And that happened numerous times, more than once, more than twice, more than three times. Um, and so we felt like it was reasonable to say, should we ask that attorney to not represent, you know, the same firm is fighting against us in court, and the staff has some issues with that.
Well, I, now, I think that's a, a pretty legitimate thing. What, did you, did you tell them that?
Yes, more than once, more than twice, more than three times, and that continued. And so we felt like we should probably put it in the agreement.
Yeah, it's not in writing, it's not in writing.
Can we do an, um, now, this is asking our attorney, can we do a amended, uh, addendum to the agreement?
Yeah, this is Brian Shaw. Uh, you can always do an addendum. I, I'm reading this agreement now about the timelines. And by the way, I will say, there are certainly some good efficiency reasons why some services regarding real estate, et cetera, perhaps should be handled by local counsel. And so I, I think those, those, you know, there are advantages there that, that uh, explain and uh, continue to explain why it could be useful to have a, a local attorney doing real estate. Uh, as I look at the time here, uh, the Cindy had mentioned 120 days termination.
It's, yeah, last paragraph of.
On page six, the last paragraph of the first page of Exhibit A.
And just to be clear, my goal is not to terminate the agreement. I think we need, we had a verbal agreement with the firm, but we did not put it in the contract about the conflict of interest situation that Dr. Lottor described. So I think we just need to have one of these, you know, letters added to say, um, in the case of a potential conflict of interest, this is how it will be resolved.
Right. And I, I'm not suggesting you try to terminate. I'm just pointing out that I would hope that the law firm would uh, would uh, be amenable to that. And if they're amenable to it, then we don't, you don't have to look at what the technical language of the contract is on renewal and non-renewal. I just wanted to point out, uh, this, first of all, you had indicated four months. I think 120 days is termination sort of at any time, for any reason, like in October or September or whatever. Now, that's what that deals with. That doesn't deal with the automatic renewal.
Right. It essentially gives you lever- leverage, leverage to change the contract.
Yeah, so it basically says, you know, it may be renewed, but if things aren't working out, then either party can give notice of up to, you know, four months and say, we want to go a different direction, and uh, let's have enough time to make that transition. So I don't think there's any 120-day bar, that we, we've passed a bar date. It's, it, I'm also, it's not clear whether it automatically redo- renews. It says it shall be considered for renewal. I don't think it says it automatically renews.
That's a good point.
And now, I think in practice, it has been automatically renewed. Uh, that's a pretty good way to treat it. I just, I just think if you have that concern about, uh, and I think the conflict of interest is a legitimate concern, because I know staff has been frustrated to have, find themselves sort of arguing against an attorney who is on one case and who's representing, another person, the firm's representing them, representing the board on another case. I think that should be discussed. I, again, I, I would hope they would be amenable. If they're not amenable, I'm not certain you're bound to this. That's all I'm saying.
This is Laura. I've got a question. Cindy, you said that we had, and maybe I've misunderstood what you were saying. Did you say that we had a verbal agreement with them already not to represent the other party?
During, during the interview process, it was agreed that there would be no representation of anyone making a claim against the district.
But yet, they've still been doing that?
Yes.
That's not.
So I think Andrew and David have done a good job for us, but other members of the firm have represented other clients.
Well, the, do you think it, that, that we need to have our chair and vice chair and maybe our uh, our superintendent have a little meeting with them and, or, or even our attorney, our other attorney, anyway, to get a clause in there and if. And if they don't agree to that, then just tell them we got our 120 days.
That's why we're having this discussion. That's why we're having this discussion, Carolyn.
And to say that, that we're going to do that, but, and to do that clause at that point, to put it in writing at that point, to have it in writing at that point. But I mean, to put it in black and white.
Wouldn't some of those negotiations slow down the actual land purchase or deal itself?
They're obligated to provide services.
In a timely fashion?
Whatever the contract says.
Yeah, David, I think in any individual request for their services is different than negotiating a contract.
Wouldn't these discussions about conflict of interest to slow down the actual deal that we have to make?
I'm not following. I mean, if it's a source of frustration for Dr. Lauter and the rest of the employees that have to deal with it, I definitely think it's something that we need to...
It's a clarification we need to bring to Hartson Williams.
Well, I think we need to go ahead and break it.
So I'm just wondering why we haven't had this discussion prior to tonight. I know this is on the agenda, but I'm thinking some of this should have already been discussed so that we can kind of get where they are in their position on it. Because I guess we're discussing that Andrew and David represent and negotiate all the real estate portions of that. And then Cindy, you're talking about some of the others that address some of the appeals and the issues in some of the other areas, correct?
Yes, just from the one case I know about. There were, there have been other cases, though.
I don't know why we're just not directing the board chair and the vice chair and/or to include the superintendent because it's really involving the board to have that discussion so we can get an opinion. Because we're all just sitting here deciding what they may or may not take a position on. And I think we need to know that before we make a decision, where they actually stand.
I mean, are we okay with putting a clause in this contract about conflicts of interest?
I mean, we would have to define what a conflict of interest is, I'm thinking, for sure. And I guess our board attorney could do that, but I just, my thought would be, this discussion needs to take place so that they can either say, yes, they agree that it is a conflict of interest, or they don't agree with it, so we know how to proceed from there.
Right. So to Holly's point, can we have, Brian, can you draft a, you know, a letter F or whatever it is in one of these, you know, add one extra little paragraph? And then Rob and Barry present that to the firm?
Are we okay with that?
Yeah. Yes, that's actually what I thought was going to happen because there had been some discussions about this before, but...
We have not had an open, an open session discussion on it. That's why, that's why it's here.
And it should have been brought up as soon as it happened instead of waiting until two or three times and y'all get frustrated about it.
My understanding is it was brought up by staff.
Yeah, it was brought up each time. As Ms. Fertner boss said when she was the chair, when we hired them, they agreed that that wouldn't happen. And then happened the first time. We hope that's a misunderstanding. Talked to them about it. Said, you know, oh, yeah, it won't happen again. Two months later, happens again. We talked to them again. Month later, happens again. So it is pretty bad. And we were, it was definitely something that we felt like, you know, was a problem, and that's why we mentioned it.
So I didn't realize that it was an ongoing issue. I just, I knew about the one last one, but I guess that's been over the timeframe. I don't know, I don't know exactly, but my, just my thought is, and maybe we need to issue that in writing instead of having a verbal, if that verbal is not getting anywhere, just to have them to respond so that we do have documentation for it. Or we just tell them, if it happens again, you are on notice. I mean, a conflict would not be good, whether they agree with it or not. If we deem it's a conflict, it's a conflict.
Well, it still should be in writing, that you can refer to it.
That's what I'm saying. We are talking about verbal, but we're not actually getting anywhere with doing anything. You know, we're just kind of spinning our wheels. But my thought would be, if you feel like the verbal conversations have been exhausted and that's not getting anywhere, then we do need to put something in writing or just put them on notice.
Well, we can put them on notice, exactly what you're saying, Holly. Chris has, Chris has indicated that he has, he has the incident dates. So if we would have those and we would go to them and say, this is the language that we're going to put into this contract, and here are the dates, and this is why we're putting this language in the contract. Because we've asked you not to do this, and you said gentlemanly, you've been gentleman, and you said you weren't going to do it. So your word is obviously not binding, so now we're going to make it binding in this contract with this language.
The draft, the draft wording we should put in should also indicate that no other provisions of the existing contract change.
You don't think they have the right to say, I want, we want to change some of the hourly rates?
Why would they have to do that? Why would that have, I mean, why, why would that, wait a minute. Why does that have anything, why does the rate have to do with that?
If you're adjusting a contract, my rates from 2018 were, were X. My rates now are different.
Right, but they would do that possibly anyway. What has that got to do with adding a conflict of interest call?
They can do that anyway because we have a contract, right? Now that specifies what the rate is.
I don't want to scramble the rest of the...
Then why are we having that discussion?
Right. I'll tell you what, Rob, if they decide they want to change, change their rates, then it's time to take the toys and go home. And we'll find somebody else. Because I guarantee you, there's plenty of real estate firms that do real estate law in Cabarrus County that would jump at the opportunity to be, to represent us. So I'm not too worried about that. And bidding that contract and doing the work to do an RFP for that is way simpler than what we had to do for the other side when, when Fortune Shaw came in. That was a much more complex because we were dealing with school law. Real estate law is way different.
Gotcha. So Brian, are you going to write something for us? Brian Shaw? Did we lose you?
Talked this ear off.
He's on, he must be on mute.
All right, going ones for Brian Shaw?
Yeah, he had already agreed to that.
Okay, well, I will follow up with Brian, have a clause, share it with y'all, and then Barry and I will talk to the firm. Is that okay?
Yep. Yep.
Yep. The only thing I ask is, Chris, if you have those dates documented, I'd like to get that. Where at least that way, you know, we're now providing something in writing to them to say, look, you know, you did this and you're, that way, you know, it's, it's not like Holly said, just the verbal. It's a documented, hey, look, we've said it over and over, and you just seem to ignore us. You're not a very good steward.
Yeah, I'm not sure we have the dates. I had, I just texted you guys some documentation from that. So we can, we can go from there and discuss.
Okay, well, something that's close, doesn't have to be every one of them, but if it's more than three, or if it's at least three, then that's enough.
Yeah, three in two years, okay.
I mean, because that means that they just don't want to hear. Just want to do what they want to do.
Okay, we good? All right, we do have a need to go into closed session. What does it say? To consult with attorneys and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A3, and to consider confidential personal matters pursuant to General Statute 143, 318 dot 11A6. And I would suggest we take a 10-minute break before we go into our, meet for our closed session. But I would need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
I'm a second.
Motion by David, second by Holly. All in favor of going into closed session, say aye.
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 Okay, that motion passes. We will say goodnight to our public audience watching or listening to us tonight. And see you next week.
Back at 9:40 or 9:50?
Yeah, 9:50, 9:50, yes.